All right, I would like to call the October 6, 2021 Brookline's Regular Select Board Meeting to Order. The time is 6:32. We have in attendance, Peter Barris is going to be doing the minutes from the recording because he had two other appointments tonight with budgeting. So he asked us to speak clearly towards the microphone so that he can pick up the information. I'm also going to identify who's in the room. We have God Tanza, the videographer, town clerk. We have Everett Mark Bill, our road supervisor, Gwen Tanza, Selectman, Stanoga, Bruce Mello, Don Maggio, also Selectman on Zoom. We have Dave Jones and we have Sarah Lang from, who will be speaking to us shortly, from the Southern Vermont Economy Project Manager. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
Question. There was a notification, and I can't find my copy of it, requiring that the town have had report of road work to be done and need to be filed with the AOT, I think, on October 1st. Is that anything that's going to be discussed tonight, whether that deadline was met, what the report was all about?
Oh, I'm not sure. No, I don't have any information on that. If it came in and it was road-related, I may have sent it off to Archie. Do you know?
Yeah, I haven't seen anything.
Next issue was DCA. You've mentioned, sent us a report and you set up a meeting date and time.
Oh, that was, no, that was for the redistrict?
Yes, redistrict. But the DCA has to go through it, correct?
Right, if, if in fact it affects our town. They're going to be sending us, they're going to keep us updated with what's going on. But they said if we wanted to set a meeting date, but we'd never had to, so I'll look at it when I get more information.
Sam, do your two questions, so that Peter can hear it, is, you had a question about DCA transportation, October 1st deadline or something, now I can't recall.
Yeah, I, in my hurriedness to get stuff organized for tonight, I came across a notice, an email from a department of transportation that requested, or reminded us of the date of October 1st to have the requests for either grants or budget is required to be reported to AOT, and they were looking, reminding us that October 1st was the deadline date?
Yeah, my, my bet is that that was the municipal mitigation grant deadline, which was October 1st. Which, we could add something under roads for me to just talk briefly about that because we did submit a grant request related to the salt sand shed, so we could talk about that under that.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Yeah, that was.
Anything else for, changes to the agenda? All right, I dated under, any question under highways and roads?
I don't know if anyone got the opioid notification of the ability to join the suit. I didn't know with our budget situation what it is, if it was something that would apply to us in terms of acquiring any additional funds from another source. I didn't know what the requirements were, if we had done any, if we had any knowledge of what specific.
I just got a letter yesterday in regards to that, the opioid settlement.
Yes, yeah.
And it's for the statewide.
Right. But I think you have to, as a town, take the action of joining the suit by filing a document to that effect, and I didn't know if that was anything that would be, if anyone had done, if that's on the agenda for discussion tonight, I didn't see.
No, that's just.
It's not on the agenda for discussion tonight. I did not read it, I did print it out. But we can put it under communications. Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, then we will take a look at the September 15 regular meeting minutes. And we'll go over any corrections that we have for that. On page one of three, I had a couple of items that I'd like to modify. Under open review, discuss, vote on electrical bills, I wanted to add after the amount that's listed, $2,074. This also includes additional outside lighting upgrades. Under new business, item B, October, it's the, I should say October 5th, and it should say FEMA workshop. Not ARPA, it's FEMA.
I'm sorry, which one? What number is this?
Um, item B under new business, it should say October 5th, and it should be FEMA workshop.
And a correction should be made on was?
The date and the name of the?
No, a correction on there was discussion. It's kind of got like a little hyphenated thing.
Okay, yeah, the word was discussion, there was a little foreign mark.
And the date should be October 5th, not 19?
October, no, this is number B.
Yeah?
October 5th, 2021 FEMA workshop.
Okay.
I'm guessing, I went through this the other day and that's what I noticed. I also have under C, Flood Resilient Communities Fund, add to, okay. There was discussion of new federal funds and conversation with Mr. Clark to apply for funds. I wanted to add the words to apply for funds.
Going back to open review, discuss voter electrical bill bits, in light of the fact that the first line of the second paragraph references outside lighting at the town office.
Yes, he was going to have to hear you, he's going to be doing this.
Okay, and the first correction, I just wanted to know if that wanted to be in addition to the fact that that outside lighting was mentioned in the first line of the second paragraph?
Oh, all right.
Was there something additional to what was already stated, or is that the same thing?
It's the same thing, I'm sorry, let's strike that, let's strike my first correction under upgrades. My, my, I'm just too, yeah. My last correction on page one of three is, it says there was under old business, second paragraph, there was discussion about the budget, unexpected expenses such and such, and Mark, Mr. Bills will bring further information for the September 22 meeting. We didn't have a meeting on September 22nd, so I'm not sure when that was supposed to.
Hmm, it's a good.
I think the premise of it was probably it was going to be the next meeting, so it would probably was intended to be this meeting.
Okay, October.
Peter just probably got the date wrong, or heard, or we might have said something wrong, so.
Right, all right, so it's October 6th. That's all I have on page one. Anybody else have anything for page one? Page two? Bruce?
Uh, the Historic Buildings Committee.
Historic Buildings Committee?
Discussion of future plans for Round School House. Mr. Mello discussed a possible RFP for needed work? No, I don't remember discussing a request or proposal or anything.
So you're saying there was no discussion of that requesting a RFP?
No, I can recall. And then there's something else here. If you go down to discussion, number two, discussion of future plans for Brookline Meeting House.
You want page one or page two?
On page two.
Page two. I'm going to repeat, Dot, uh, dot one. Number, number two under historic buildings. The last sentence, Mr. Mello suggested there was a lack of organization in dealing with the building. Item, lack of direction, not organization, dealing with the building. So I kind of don't like that really.
Okay, I don't think they liked it either, because the word is direction, not organization.
Not organization, absolutely not. And that's a term I think, if I could read my.
So you had two corrections. One, under historic buildings, discussion of further plans. Mr. Mello did not discuss any RFP for needed work, although you talked about this. Will be a list at some time that we will discuss.
Right there.
And that, um, part of discussion of future plans, you were, you do, take out the word organization and put in direction. I also had a correction in that paragraph, wherever the name David Shupp is, it should be Shupp. S-C-H-U-P-P, David Shupp, from Brookline Landowner, and a donation from David Shupp gift. And the last thing was, the committee had $27,000 given by the Ladies Benevolent Society, not by the town.
Samara is in the waiting room.
Oh, anything else for, um, anybody else for anything on that page two of three? Page three of three? I have a question about under beavers or humans adding wood to the culvert, the very last sentence, it says, and, and has a new representative, there was discussion of prices and of a persistent flooding situation involving a high volume pump. Is that Mr. Dawson's pump, maybe we mentioned that?
Yeah.
Okay, we can, we can, we can scratch, we can drop that mention of the pump that was talking about a resident who had water problems in his basement on Parker Road. And that is it for me. Anybody else have anything? Okay, all right, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from.
Samara?
Samara, do you have a question? No, she's, 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 yeah, she's on her, she's in the bathroom there. Hi, Samara.
Hi, Samara.
Let's see. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amended minutes for September 15, 2021 at this time. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stanoga. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the amended minutes, minutes since September 15, 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Minutes as amended pass. Next, we will go to the minutes from our special meeting on September 24, 2021. There's only one page of minutes. Does anybody have any changes or amendments to this seven minutes? No, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from the special meeting on Friday, September 24, 2021 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstained.
Bruce Mello abstains. The minutes are approved as written with one extension. Scheduled members of the public. We have online Sarah Lang from the Southern Vermont Economy Project Manager. Sarah said that she would like to have about five minutes of our time to talk about the program and, and just fill us in a little bit. Sarah, welcome, Lori.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. And Dot, thank you for making a phone call to make sure that I was here. I, Sarah Lang, I work with the Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation. We are one of the 12 regional development corporations in the state of Vermont, and we service the Wyndham region for which Brookline is a part of. And typically, we try to attend at least one select board meeting every year in every town that we service. And like I was saying to Dot earlier on the phone, we'll come as many times as you let us. So if you ever have any questions about any of our programs or services, we are always happy to come back and, and talk in more in depth. And if I understand correctly, Dot, I have five minutes tonight?
About five minutes, yeah.
Great, okay. So first of all, I really want to thank you all and thank the town for supporting us on this past town meeting with some appropriations. We asked all towns in our service area to provide funding at $3 per person. And we really appreciate your, your support in this past town meeting. And this past town meeting season, we actually had 18 of the 27 towns support us. And that is up from, I think, 16 last year. And you, Brookline and Townsend were the two new towns. So we really, really appreciate it. Every little bit helps. And, you know, happy to answer any questions about that. But really, I just wanted to give you some updates on our programs and services. Dot, were you able to provide the select board with the stuff that I sent via email?
You sent some things today, no?
I believe it was yesterday when I had responded to your email. Anyways, I'll make sure that you all have it. Essentially, it's our funding request letter, which we sent by mail this summer, and then also a select board visit overview. I don't know if we'll let me show you, but it basically just has some information on our programs. The ones I really wanted to highlight are the program that I run, the Southern Vermont Economy Project, funded by USDA, and we provide capacity building, trainings and programs for municipalities, for nonprofits around economic development. So for instance, we're running a project development series right now to really help volunteers up their project management, their grant writing, their project stewardship skills. And the next, the next course in that is grant writing. So that may be of interest to anyone at the town or potential residents in Brookline. And you can find all this information on our website. Another thing I want to highlight is our Pipelines and Pathways Program. We're in all of the high schools, and we help students with career preparedness. And I believe Brookline sends students to Leland and Gray, am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
So this past year, Leland and Gray, we completed a senior survival class for all seniors that includes soft skills around career preparedness. And there were 19 students that graduated with Wyndham Work Ready mini credentials. And we're basically expanding services into all of the high schools with the goal of really starting with kids their freshman year to prepare them to be ready to work or go to college, whichever their path is right for them. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is our Business Assistance Program. So actually, this past year, we expanded from one staff person to three staff people. So we now more than ever have capacity to really help each and every business in our region. There's a variety of things that go along with it, but most of our services are free or low cost. And, you know, we're here to help someone that has an idea for a business, start a business through sort of the growth phase of the business. We also do lending, and we help people with their business plan. So I'll pause there because I only have five minutes, happy to answer any questions. And again, I can send all of this to you in, in an email, so you have links and everything.
Yeah, I would appreciate, I, I got a little busy between yesterday afternoon and today, and I think I noticed this 38 emails that I, another 38 in my box, and I had to, had to open up, so I apologize for that. But if you have sent it to me, I will send it to everybody else as well.
Great, and I usually send that out a week prior to the meeting. I just want to make sure. I would have done it had I known, and here we are, so happy to, to send it. Yeah.
Sam, ask a question.
Yes, Sarah, you had mentioned regarding new businesses, you referenced funding. Do you arrange funding or do you provide funding?
Both.
Both, ah, interesting.
Yeah, so recently, we've become a lending institution, so we do provide, can provide loans for specific types of businesses in specific sectors. There are some sort of nuances to that, but there are a variety of products. You know, mostly sort of low interest loans. We're really interested in sort of helping those businesses that can't get those traditional loans that they could just get at a bank for a variety of reasons. So we're trying to sort of fill that gap of like, someone starting a business, maybe not being able to get a loan until they're whatever size or have whatever net worth. We're trying to fill that gap, so a lot of small businesses in our area.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, that's, well, that's great. I really like the idea of what you did with the, with the Leland and Gray, giving them some skills for work ready and their mini credentials. I think that's pretty cool. Looking forward to reading about it. And while this might be our first meeting, we probably will have you back again once we get our little better understanding of what's going on and.
Exactly, and like I mentioned, like, if you look through the, the overview that I send you, and there's a specific program or a specific loan or a specific anything, we are happy to come back, talk about business, talk about students, talk about workforce, talk about talent retention, talk, you know, you name it, we'll gladly come back as many times as you'll allow us.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And you're also available by phone call if, if we have some particular questions we send.
Yep, yeah, phone call, email. I'm, I'm pretty quick on my email. So yeah, happy to answer any questions and whatever method works for people.
Well, I'll have to admit, when I called Sarah, we played phone tip, I realized that I had did draft her letters after the last meeting, and I was in my draft folder, I never sent it. So I went and looked, and I saw that it was never sent, and I called, and we worked it out for tonight, but I apologize if that happens.
No, it's totally okay.
For once. All right, Sarah, well, thank you very much for joining us. You're welcome to stay on tonight if you'd like to. But I understand you wanted to sign off and enjoy your evening.
It is, it is dinnertime in the household, so I will be heading, but thank you so much. I really, really appreciate it and look forward to coming to future meetings.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
Glad we could.
Bye-bye.
Okay, very good. We have Samara, so, unscheduled members of the public, Samara, would you? Hi, Samara.
Hi, Dot. Um, yeah, I, I wanted to briefly, A, one, I couldn't remember if I said I was going to be here for this meeting or not, so I thought I'd better show up. And yeah, there are a couple of things that I noted on your agenda that I wanted to address briefly. And one thing regarding my personnel status, I wanted to let you know briefly. And also, I wanted to mention some of the roadwork issues that we've noted on our Hill, both as a thanks, and we hope there's more to come. And so I'll start with, on the agenda items, I noted you're looking at HR issues and, as Dot may or may not have filled some of the others of you in, we've talked on the phone a lot about the lack of continuity in the Treasury Department since my retirement, my so-called retirement. And I think I have emphasized over time that I think it's really, one of the options, there are several different structural options that can be done to organize both the financial reporting and treasury management. And I'm trying to put together a writ, some written recommendations, which include the fact that I, I truly think from my own perspective that it's time for us to hire a real bookkeeper. And there are, the advantages of that is it's not an elected position. If the person isn't competent, you can fire them, or ask them to resign. And if they are competent, then you'll be happy to have a real bookkeeper who understands accounting and who isn't floundering and trying to learn as they go, which is a problem for many towns. And we are not unique. And I've talked ad nauseam to Nemrick people about what other towns are dealing with and what their recommendations are. And so I'm putting together a written summary of that, which I should have to you in about a week. And I'll just email it to all of you. And it's just for your consideration, because I know you're trying to consider how to make the administration of the town just run more smoothly. So that's part one. And Dot can, Dot, you can share whatever I've talked to you about. I'm totally fine with it. I'm just trying to put it together in a more formal way, because I think it's an ongoing issue. And again, we are not alone, and I know you're considering whether or not to have an audit. And many towns who have one, a treasurer, book, town clerk in one position, do have an external audit. And that is one option that you could look to, just knowing that, you know, the cost for an audit is about $15,000 minimum. So just be prepared for that when you come to budget time. Okay, and then the second thing on my mind, and I'll jump to the roadwork that was done in response to the emergency situation, the emergency flooding that's happened. A, we, I wrote a letter, my husband and I sat down and wrote a letter three different ways, and I have to amend it again, because when we started, nothing had been done. And then when I revamped it, quite a bit has been done, and we are very, very happy about that. And we're hoping it's only the beginning. Because the dirt roads in our town, we, I think we struggle because we have a very small road crew. And what my husband and I ascertained is that it seems like Whitney Hill Road is one of the last roads to be addressed. And we took the time and came into town office and found out we are the second most populated dirt road in the town, based on tax parcels, second only to the Gresy Brook Road that goes up to Athens. And I think there's a, a high level of discontent based on the fact that we seem to be, as I will quote one of my neighbors saying, "the armpit of Brookline." And we would like to see a more care, maybe a long-term written plan of regular road maintenance. So that's our suggestion, and I do intend to finalize something in writing and put it in writing, because I really appreciate the work that's done. We just would like to see something more systematic. And specifically, when there's an emergency situation, maybe call on more outside contractors. So that's that. And then last but not least, you need to know that I told Michael and Judy yesterday that as of the end of October, I'm officially resigning. I can't maintain the town work and handle the current family issues that I'm handling with the death of my father. So I wanted you guys to know that officially. So that's all I've got. And it's just for your consideration, and I wanted to make sure that I shared it in a, you know, in a timely manner. In the meantime, I'm going to try and finish as much as I can by the end of the month. And both Michael and Judy have been, you know, I'm available for their questions. And they're both working pretty hard, so that's good. And what isn't done, I will leave a list of what needs to be done, but I can't keep it up anymore, I just can't. So I wanted you all to know. And, you know, I don't mean to be critical, because I know you guys work hard and you're all basically volunteers. But I thought I just wanted to let you know what some of the stuff that Dot and I have talked about already, and that I'm trying to put together some kind of formal. And that I'm trying to put together some kind of formal ideas that I've had about different alternatives for um, the financial management of the town.
Yeah, that, your, your, your input is, is very important in this respect. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things. Um, you know, when we had the emergency storm, um, I, we went to a FEMA meeting yesterday and they do recommend that we have long-term written plans for regular road maintenance, so that we have before emergency, then we can add emergency during pictures and then follow-up repair pictures. So having a plan available for maintenance or culvert, we may already have it, I'm not sure, but it's something that needs to be reviewed. And it is on my tasklist for tonight to discuss a little bit more. But uh, and I didn't know you were coming tonight. I would, we'd love to have you help us tie up the end of the year. Um, and you're, is Michael, I mean, do you think Michael will be able to step in, in your shoes and help us with the budgeting? Or is he, you know, that rare?
I can't speak for Michael. He's, he's certainly smart enough to do it. Um, and Dave basically handled a lot of the budgeting last year. I don't think, honestly, you really need me. What you need are year-end financials for the prior year. And I will try and wrap those up. There are just a few minor adjustments to be made and the financial statements are done. Um, I'm gonna recommend that you change the format for the financial statements this year. Because basically, one of my recommendations is to streamline a lot of what goes on in the financial reporting department. And um, because uh, basically, the format that goes into the town report is one that's been carried over for many years. And it's not the most streamlined way to do the reports. There's a lot easier ways. So I, I think there may have been reasons for doing them the way they were done. And um, I'm gonna put together my recommendations for how I think we should change them. Then you'll have to talk to the auditors and see if they agree. But um, but I, I will do, I, that is one of my goals for the end of the month is hopefully by next or next select board meeting, I, I'm trying my best to get the June 30th, 2021 financial statements into a final unaudited format, so that that's really what you need, so that you can look at budgeting options for next year, plus any new items you need to budget for. So, so that's one of my goals.
Can I put you on the agenda for the 20th and we'll, we'll have a certain?
I think so. I think you could. And I, I've suggested to Michael that he'll probably want to sit in on it.
Okay.
So I'm, okay.
All right. Very good.
All right. I'm gonna, I'll leave you guys to do the thing.
Wait, 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 wait.
Samara, as a citizen of the town, never mind the times I've served as a select board, I really appreciate, respect you, and thank you for all the work that you've done for the town. I don't think anyone has a, a full understanding of what your service has been to the town. And I, I very much want to thank you for everything you've done, your willingness to help us out here at the end of your, your tenure. And I wish that your, your family situation uh goes as smoothly as is possible. And again, thank you very, very much.
Well, thank you. Keep guys back. I appreciate your dedication as well. All right.
All right.
Well, good night, everybody.
Thank you, Samara.
Thanks, Samara. Good night.
Good night.
All right, um, I have a question.
Guy, I'm sorry. No, that's, uh, you attended. I was concerned about the end of the year reports because um, they're really important for the budget.
Exactly. Yeah.
We don't know where they are.
All right. So uh, next under new business, um, it says initial discussion of town audit. Well, I think Samara told us that uh, we do have a audit budget line, which we've been building. However, when we do our next budget, uh, what do we think about putting in enough money for a budget?
We have a slash account.
We do have an account that has uh, an audit, a small account that they were putting in several thousand dollars here and there. It wasn't done every year. So I think just like four thousand dollars, maybe five in it. I don't have it in front of me though.
Can I just ask a question? Have we discussed this idea of an external audit with the auditors? Do the auditor, do our elected auditors think that that is necessary? I guess I would question whether it's necessary, but that would be based on the input from them, I think, more than anything. I understand that we've all had concerns about there not being timely reporting of things, but that doesn't necessarily mean that there's, there are issues that rise to the point of needing warranting an external audit. But the auditors presumably would have a better view of that, I think.
Right. One of the things I, I spoke with Samara about, she felt that there hasn't been an audit in over 10 years. And there have been several treasurers. And if we do decide to go forward and hire an accountant for a, uh, she said, a real bookkeeper, which uh, I think everybody here has been doing well with the bookkeeping. Um, there's no, nothing alarming that needs to be audited. However, she felt that if we were going to move and try to hire someone, they should come in with a clean slate and work from there. This is our initial discussion to bring it to the town auditors is on my, I'll write it down. Yes. Stan?
Yeah, uh, I think David's, both of your comments are appropriate for the situation. Uh, I think it would be courteous and respectful of the town elected auditors to have an opportunity to provide input. Uh, my understanding, uh, having been involved to an extent with the issue of auditing of the town records some time ago when I was last select board member and talking with audit firms, uh, my understanding is that an exterior audit is far more in-depth than what the town auditors do. Uh, and I, from experience, tended to note that the auditing function was among the last that got done in a year. Uh, and it was done in a very quick manner to assist the town in getting some kind of uh, statement that is appropriate for an auditing function for the level of the, of uh, audit that's done by town auditors. Uh, many towns provide for an exterior audit to be done simply at basic intervals. It's every three years, five years, whatever. And lastly, if you are looking to hire, and this is, and it's, I think, probably a very sound uh process and thought, to hire a firm to come in who is familiar with bookkeeping, it is more than likely going to happen that that firm is gonna demand an audit to be done. Cause they do not want to come in to a situation where they don't know what the standards or statements for the town is. They don't know the accuracy, the balances. And when I had done my research back when, that was a comment that came up. If, if I'm gonna go in, just like you do on a teller in a, in a bank, before that teller takes the cash drawer from another teller, they want it audited by an independent third party before they put their name and such on the line. So I would suggest that uh, we look at the big picture, as everyone here has described it, keeping in mind that it, I, A, think that internal auditors, elected official auditors do not do the kind of required audit that would be necessary for transferring this to another entity. And secondly, that new entity will probably demand it. You may not even be able to get one to come in and do it unless you do have that done. So that's my input.
Juan, you have any input?
No.
Bruce, anyone else?
I guess the only other thing I'd add is to your point, I mean, I, I, I think probably further discussion of this should happen in conjunction with the discussions of Samara's other recommendations of possibly where we want to go directionally as far as the treasury of the town. I mean, I, I think it's a different, they're kind of all tied together somewhat. Um, so it, we, to Stan's point and your point, would probably make sense for us to discuss this along with those other recommendations, whether she sends them to us or whether Dot, from discussions you've had with Samara, you can express some of those things.
Well, I'll certainly add to uh, uh, between now and the next meeting, getting in touch with our current auditors and asking them maybe to join us or to give us their opinions in writing about an external audit needs. And uh, we'll also have Samara's information to discuss at the next meeting as well. Um, uh, for the unaudited reports that she'll do for us for two thousand twenty twenty-one. So it will, it will, it's our first discussion. I think we're gonna have several more. Stan?
One other comment. When I was getting the, the bids from potential external auditors, uh, fifteen would be a minimum. It wouldn't be unusual to see eighteen to twenty-two thousand dollars as a exterior audit cost.
Did we know when the last actual audit was?
Uh, yes, it was 11 years ago when uh, the transition from Annie Harrington to Samara's Wick. And um, I believe that cost the town, I thought it was maybe twelve or fourteen thousand dollars.
That sounds familiar.
Yeah. And again, you know, that was 11 years ago. And we used Sullivan out of uh, I think Marchelia, uh, who's uh, you know, a firm that is uh, well-versed in doing audits. And we didn't have a forensic audit. We had a general audit, which is, you know, again, a step below forensic. Forensic is a very expensive audit. And as you know, it would probably be maybe thirty, thirty thousand because, but I don't think the town actually needs that sort of audit. They just need a general accounting. And uh, that's what these companies do. In the price range of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars for a town of our size and finances the way we have it.
My understanding is they go back two to three years to see if they can get a reconciliation with the town records based on their research of detailed hard copy data, you know, dispatching computer stuff. So uh, the extent of it is uh significantly uh greater than local elected auditors. And I must say that in my twenty-eight, nine years as a, as an appraiser, and I go from town to town, it's not unusual. I don't mean to, to make this sound bad, but on more occasions than I would have thought, there had been issues where monies disappeared. Uh, and uh, and it was town auditors that had been involved in reconciling, so-called reconciling, the financial, financial statements year after year. Not gonna name towns, but uh, it's uh, it always, I think, is, particularly if we are concerned for consistency purposes and depth of knowledge and no, and no snags along the way.
Well, I think it's a healthy thing to do.
It's a click thing to do. Exactly. It's a healthy thing to do.
Because uh, it's been a while and mistakes happen. And it's good to start all over again and start with, you know, a brand new, a brand new ledger and knowing that everything is accounted for. Like I say, there are mistakes made. None of us are perfect. As far as naming proprieties, I cannot see that in our town whatsoever.
No, I'm not implying that is the case.
Yeah.
But uh, it just.
Just finding, you know, where the errors are.
Yeah. If there are.
Exactly.
All right. So we'll bring this up again. And as I said, I will talk to Frank and um, not just nice, yeah, the auditors um, and get there and put on this as well. Okay. Any other before we move on to uh, new business, item D? All right. New business, item D, discussion about human resource needs, current and future. Well, we just heard from Samara again, that um, she, it will, as our assistant, one of our assistant treasurers is looking forward to uh, retirement. And um, so we have Samara. And I know Michael Masters had asked us to begin to look for his replacement. He, he, he's got a lot going on in, on his plate. Um, we talked about the Lister's, which we are looking for a couple of people for that. And Stan did some research on that. And uh, I also would like to bring up that as we move into the FEMA paperwork, uh, that I am going to ask the town to uh, allow for an appointment of a temporary administrative assistant, which would be one hundred percent um FEMA reimbursable for. And so those are the things that you wanted to talk about. Which one would you like to talk about first? Anyone have an idea?
Can I just clarify something, Dot? Are you, are you sure that you meant that that would be a hundred percent FEMA reimbursable? Or a hundred percent ARPA reimbursable?
FEMA, for the FEMA, for the FEMA score-related work that we are now going to begin doing, we can get a temporary assistant to help with FEMA. We can also hire temporary assistant for ARPA work. So that, that's the other one. The FEMA right now is a little bit more uh pressing because we have to have that in effect working before the 29th of October if we wanted to claim any money back. So I, I, Bruce showed up too yesterday. We went to a meeting, FEMA-run meeting in uh, Townsend at the town hall and uh, learned a lot of information. And that was one of the things I, I would like to uh, to, I, uh, I would like to, I've already approached Guy Tans. And Guy Tans has worked through the Irene storm already. Uh, I think Guy has all the access to financials that I need to work with. A select board volunteer cannot be paid for any of this work. However, a temporary administrative assistant employee can be hired based upon his current salary of twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents an hour. Probably looking at if, if, if uh, three or four weeks, maybe four hours, five hours a week at the most spent on this. I think we can get our ducks in a row and have our FEMA application uh, sent in, uh, loading our documents into the portal. And I bet before Thanksgiving, we could have our money. If it's possible, they're, they're going very quickly because they have, Ramon's, I wanna say Ramon's, Ramon's damage was small compared to what they're doing out down south with the damages that they had in the other states. And so uh, we will get our own Brookline assistant representative from FEMA to work with us. Uh, I'm certainly not trying to uh, Bogart the uh, the, the work with FEMA. Does anybody else want to do this? Okay, all right. I just want to, I, 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 but you need two people.
Right. Right. I, I, I have two concerns. We've gone through a scenario where we've done something for the round school house and people wondered why it wasn't why we didn't advertise, put it out the bid or advise others that there's a need. And I'm wondering if uh, it might behoove us, and this is no reflection on any opinion that you've expressed. I think I would be a guilty person. However, I do know in the conversation that occurred that day, someone brought up all the hundreds of thousands of dollars that was brought in from the last flood Irene. And I, I hate to offend that individual or anyone else that might have had a similar experience, put out a seven-day notice, you're interested, apply. Uh, if there is none uh, way, I, I think if it weren't for that one consideration, I'd endorse completely Guy being the person, cause he was here, he knows the routine or he can reflect back on it. Probably can go back to the files and have the dot data, et cetera.
Such a timeline.
It's, it's, you know, uh, I, I know that. So I guess the question then becomes, well, that comment, is he looking to do this tonight? So it can begin tomorrow or the next week or the two weeks later?
Well, what I was considering, since I didn't get it on the agenda because the meeting was yesterday, um, I did a little research. I may ask at the next meeting for you to concur with my appointments. But I don't have to. I mean, I can wait two weeks, I suppose. But again, FEMA, this has to be done before the 29th though? Yes, it's 20.
I don't think we can wait. Yeah.
No.
I mean, it's already the six.
The other thing I'll say is that I don't, I, I know that Dot, the way you described this was the town being able to appoint a temporary administrator. I mean, I think from things I've read about situations like this before, I think conceptually, the idea is that we can be reimbursed for town employee time. The idea is that we can be reimbursed for town employee time spent. Doing this process. So. I think of this as more being not really a situation where it makes sense for us to be. Advertising for someone out of the blue to come and help us, but more looking at our town employee. Resources and which town employee has the time and the skill set to potentially work on this. And Guy would be logical from that standpoint. Does that make sense, Stan? I don't, I'm not, I'm. I just mean, I don't think that this is really a. Situation where we're putting this out. To bid and getting a bunch of different.
Well, that understand that the time constraint that I wasn't understanding of. Was it is the twenty-ninth of this month?
Yes.
And then there is no time. We're in the same situation where with the last schoolhouse. Something has to be done.
Right, and actually, we can have more than two people involved and certainly see if there's anybody who would like to come in and help us to do paperwork. Um, but uh, you know, if you really feel that way, but I'd like to get moving on this sooner than later. Um, I'd like to next week set aside, talk with Guy if 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 he's already talked. Um, basically, I would need to have you adopt a um. The position as an appointment at a certain rate for a certain um. Above and beyond the hours at any other employment uh job description that he's doing and above and beyond town clerk time. It has to be separate time that that would be just still devoted to this and and we could always use um. Its own employee timesheet for date, hours, description of the work that was done during those hours and then. Keeping everything separate as part of FEMA. So um. Again, I'm I'm looking to do it correctly and I do think I need to have it on the agenda for the. Play, but I'm I may ask you to concur with with. Concur with me after the fact that I'd like to appoint Guy sooner rather than later. I don't wanna wait for two weeks.
I don't have a problem with that.
And I didn't have time to get it on the agenda.
The date is the critical part and I have complete confidence that Guy would do it right. Uh, and uh, that's that's not the issue. I just, to sit here after donating the time you do and get criticized for something is a little irritating. And and I and I, it not only is it inappropriate, but I just didn't wanna have to go through that. A second time within a sixty day period if I could help it.
Yeah.
I got you there.
Totally, and I totally appreciate that, Stan, and I I I completely understand where you're coming from with that also. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I just kind of along the board and can I do it?
I just wanted to be transparent in that uh, the hourly rate for the temporary employee to temporary administrative assistant. Would be uh twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents an hour for approximately four hours a week for maybe a month or. Or more and we can always suggest this. I will put it on the agenda for concurring vote. Next week and if you decide at the next meeting that it's not working, then we'll we'll have to do something else. But I wanna get our portal. Setup started. Um, I've already received uh uh an email from Kim who gave the presentation yesterday.
Okay.
And uh, she wants us to get on board because everything is gonna start rolling and um.
Dot?
Okay, Bruce?
I I have, I understand your concern.
Yeah, yeah.
I do. But here we go with the emergency event.
Yeah.
And as, we're not talking five thousand dollars, we're talking fifty-eight thousand dollars. I say take the hit. I said, we can't put this on 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 the twentieth of uh October. Someone wants to come in and meet us up. At a subsequent meeting, oh, well, sorry. The thing about this whole thing and about the last, I'm not gonna drag that into it, about what happened last time and this time. We are transparent. Person's interested in what we do as a select board has every opportunity to check to 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 follow what we've done. In three days, does that TV have this up? Okay.
It's live, it's being live broadcast right now.
And how many years have we been doing it?
About seven.
End of story. So my point is, we are transparent. If anybody has a ditch. Excuse the expression, they're gonna raise it to either the town clerk or the select board chair. And then the select board chair will hold a special meeting to counteract the 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 problem. But in the meantime, I think. Guy should go forward. That's my thing.
So is there anything we can do tonight other than the method you suggested? Should we entertain a motion?
Well, I can't do a motion because it's not on the agenda. I get it on the agenda because it was yesterday when they explained how to do it. So what I will do is I will write up my. I uh, I know we can't do things outside, but I am going to write up what they recommended for the. Job description for this, uh, very brief based upon their template. And uh, we will vote on it next meeting, but I'm gonna ask you to concur that we have already started our work. And understand, so.
It's an emergency situation for an emergency situation.
You have to do that one.
And you had, you're the hire to represent the rest of the town.
Correct.
They put you in the.
It's for their own board.
It's also about sixty thousand dollars at the time.
At least, that's just the start because we haven't got all the money yet. All right, so that's what we'll do for this. So that's my, that's for FEMA. Uh, the ARPA, that's enough, that's enough. Tell you what that, but right now, um, the listers, let's talk briefly about the listers. Uh, Stan did some research, I watched those videos and um. Um, let's see, you you reviewed the videos that Helen would halt suggested that potential listeners. Do you think that those videos would be fine? Although you did said there was a couple of sites that required login and password access. So those were also in the videos that were.
There I there, I think there were six sites that you referenced, you two. The first two are long, three hour videos. Uh, I did not watch them in length, but I got a feel for where they're going in in the introduction.
Okay.
And it's basically the philosophy of ownership, the bundle of rights, what he's meant to about basic real estate. Uh, concepts, terminology, so that a lister who's doing the uh job. Has a broader understanding of why they're doing what they're doing. Why, you know, this scenario is different than this scenario. For someone who lives in a larger town, the difference between a condo, a PUD. Uh, planning unit development, it's, you know, a PUD is. Uh, they they have a better understanding, but that is not critical for them to do the job in the sense that. Over the years, that those decisions have already been made. We have everything in the software setup. We have the categories in which each of those properties belongs. So they can enter this without having an understanding of that and do what was able to be viewed in. Uh, three, I think, of the other remaining sites, which specifically have the sheets, the process of doing the year end. Reconciliation, the transfer into the new year, how to handle the various aspects of data entry. Partial bit separation where somebody had twenty-eight years sole ten to this person and ten for that person or sole ten and kept ten. All that stuff is described inaccurately, so so they can go in and do the job essentially without having that big broader understanding. There are two two others uh addresses where once you get in, it said, put in your. ID and then your passcode, which was implying that you already were a lister or a town official that had access to memory. I could not use those. However, the 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 summary. Pre off comments I would offer is it would be a tremendous way. To allow those individuals at their own timeframe or timeframe to designate by the town to go in and see what the job would entail. Uh, before tying up anyone in the office. With training, which takes away from the fact that we've got one, what appears to be. Two people, but one person here a lot and the other person's in their hometown, it seems to me.
Let me ask you this, if so, if you later on, if we take a look at this list and it's completely printout of those videos, if you could. Hide, check off which ones would be best. I can draft a letter to the three originally interested people, tell them to watch this. It's come back to us, yes or no, you would like more in-depth training and um. So that would be.
What would be a convenient timeframe for me to get to you, Friday, Monday?
Um. Monday.
I will do this.
All right, good. All right, so we talked about temporary assistant, lister. How about the treasurer? What what do you, what do you, what do we? Do?
What do we do?
Yeah.
Bail.
Is he, is is the treasure, if we get an accountant, we can't even do that this year because we don't have.
I think we, I think we really need, honestly, I think we need to have Samara's. What Samara, I do, I still don't understand what Samara is suggesting. So personally, until I know what she's suggesting, I'm not really sure how to.
Next time.
Decide how we might go about doing it. So I'm, I think it might be. Premature to try to figure that out.
Okay, so um, well, I have her ready for the next meeting. Um, Samara will be on there, so we'll hear from Samara and we can work. Forward on that after the uh for the treasury position. All right, very good. All right, so if uh, anything else before we move on to the next item, old business? Okay, move on to old business. Okay, uh, we tabled a bid from September fifteenth regarding the generator hookup bid, which included upgrades to exterior lighting around Town Hall building. Uh, Larson Electric was sole bidder, um, including the permit and the equipment per code. We didn't know where the money was going to come from. However, uh, I think the words capital improvement and capital, there is a capital improvement fund that we had. Developed with a surplus from several years ago. It has not been touched at this time. Is this an account suitable for the uh uh in uh setting up the generator? Um, let's, we'll go through, Gwen, we'll go through the.
I, well, I think it is. I mean, I think it's something we need. I mean, we've got it sitting in here, you know. We have no power and we in being Brookline, you've known we've gone without power for a week before.
Right. Stan?
I will just echo like Gwen said.
Okay, Bruce?
I'm not so sure. I'm under the opinion that we should, uh, we're gonna start our budget pretty shortly, that we see what the year ends look like and see. I'm not against doing it, but I guess where the money is coming from. I would like to see what we have. Leftover from uh last year, if we have any surplus at all. And then take that in conjunction with all the other things that we're spending and work that into.
Well, Samara did say that there will be another small surplus from this last past, this past budgetary year. Yes, she did say that. So you're saying to to not to accept the, not to vote on the bid tonight?
That's that's my opinion.
Okay, uh, David?
Um, I tend to agree with Bruce that I'm not sure that. I don't know that I would really consider this something that the capital improvement. Concept. Would cover, though I I could be convinced that it is. Um, I guess at the moment, I'd like to see where we are financially in some other respects before we. Spend this money and I I still have concerns that this is more money than we should be spending for what we've. Asked. From the bidders, but I guess if it's the only bid. Um. You know, there, I know, I understand, we don't, we have the generator, I understand it's not booked up, but the reality is. In an emergency situation, we can use the generator for quite a bit of stuff prior to having this done. Um, so waiting a little bit longer. I think might make sense. Um, in an ideal world personally, I'd like to wait and I'd like for us to budget for it. Specifically for the next fiscal year, but maybe we decide we don't wanna wait that long, but. I'd at least like to wait and see a little bit more about where we shake out with the end of the year. Um, financially.
Where are you at, Dot?
Well, I mean, I I would rather, you know, move move along and uh. But I I understand that I I don't have a problem waiting two more weeks. If Samara is gonna come up with some of the answers, but.
We could revisit, not to wait until after the budget stuff, we could revisit it after she submits the financials. Because.
Shall we put this on the November, November? Would you like me to put it on the November third agenda?
Makes sense.
We keep putting things out, putting things out, we're never gonna get. We may use the bid, so we may not no longer have time to to do the work because.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, but um. You know.
What are we seeing good of?
So. I don't wanna see, I guess I'm gonna, I I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go with the table. I understand the discussion. I'm gonna go and make the motion and we, I could be overturned. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the bid for the generator hookup from Larson Electric LLC. Including the permit and additional equipment and lighting for Town Hall and the amount not to exceed two thousand seventy-four dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Sorry, seconded was first by Stan. Additional discussion.
What, just, where is the money gonna come from? We saw in the.
I would take it from the capital improvement fund. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none?
And how much money is in the capital improvement fund right now?
About four thousand.
Three hundred.
Three hundred dollars, something like that, forty-three hundred.
Okay.
All right, hearing none?
Uh, what was the amount again in the move, in the motion?
Two thousand, two thousand seventy-four dollars.
Oh, seven four, thank you.
Two oh seven four, yes. All right.
Can I ask one more?
Start.
Um, and apologies, but did we circulate the complete details of the bid from Larson?
Yes, it was put in the newspaper and uh, yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm finding it. I'm just looking at specifically what their bid entailed.
The bid entailed of the uh.
So fourteen hundred dollars for.
The panel to use to for running the um, see, about ten years ago, it was twelve hundred at my.
And they came, can I just ask?
Yes, I.
Larson came out and looked at our. Panel before doing the bid, I assume?
Yes, came and looked at the panel, climbed in the attic, went down into the basement, uh.
Okay.
The lines, looked at the machinery. Um. Took twenty foot cable, uh, the the wiring and then you have your your spotlights. And such.
Okay, yep, okay. Uh, sorry, that was my one other question. I hadn't actually looked at the detail of it until now.
Right. So, all right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of accepting the bid from Larson Electric for the generator and lighting. Uh, for the amount of two thousand seventy-four dollars, taking from the capital improvement fund. We'll signify by saying aye. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Gwen, hands up?
Aye.
Aye, Stan Noga?
Aye.
Aye, Bruce Mello?
No.
No, David Jones?
No.
No, Dot Maggio, yes. The ayes have it three to two to uh proceed with the uh generator setup from the uh capital improvement fund. Thank you. I understand that it's difficult and that we don't usually have a uh many. We usually have unanimous decisions, but I understand um that, but we'll move on with this.
Okay.
Okay, passed. All right, and do you want to discuss discuss job description for the road supervisor? Uh, did anybody else, did you send this to everybody?
I sent it to everybody.
All right, so uh, we have in front of us a copy of um. A job summary, levels of responsibilities, the duties of the road descrip- supervisor qualification.
Did you ask me?
No, I regret it.
Anybody else? I run this one on a lot of it. All right, um. Stan, how would you like me to approach this? Would she like to?
Uh. I totally like it. Would like me to go over and be.
Sure, you wanna just go over it?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Dot had done some research on the Listserve uh website to the state where other towns. Were state, were towns of the state of Vermont advertised for job. Uh. Employees, uh, and this was taken from the town of Stockbridge, Vermont. Uh, it has. Uh, it was of a slightly different format, uh, slightly more detailed. It has, uh, it was of a slightly different format, uh, slightly more detailed, uh, slightly longer. Uh, however, uh, given the size of our town and, uh, the fact that there are just some things that our town foreman wouldn't do, uh, road foreman, that it was abbreviated and shortened and uh, where things were, assuming that we owned all the equipment that we would have to do the job, the, the roads of the town and knowing that we're probably still gonna continue to restore rent for a short period of time, equipment, I made the changes necessary to, uh, take those kinds of considerations in, into account. I, I, obviously being human, there are probably things I, I should have changed or included or excluded, uh, but, uh, given the time, uh, two to three hours that I was able to go through this, uh, do it initially, then go back and review it, uh, I, I, uh, reduced it down to this size. And it has some basic, uh, components. The initial paragraph is the job summary. And then the levels of responsibility, uh, is indicated and to who they're, uh, responsible to. Uh, for responsibility, I referenced not only the, uh, road commissioner and, but also the select board, uh, thinking that, uh, Mark really has to interact with both those, uh, roles or entities and uh, to not include both of them would have been remiss. Uh, it gets into things in terms of major duties is, you know, maintenance task in a safe, compliant and efficient manner. Be aware and compliant with OSHA regulations. Uh, I know that in a small town, that's difficult. Uh, however, for insurance purposes, uh, in the event of an accident or something, it, it probably would be very helpful in acquiring the necessary coverage and/or benefits to have that included and that we be aware of it to an extent, uh, possible. Uh, knowing that Mark also, uh, we might have hired, hired out certain things that we simply cannot do given the staffing and equipment lacking, uh, that we would be interacting with the entities that are hired uh, and monitoring, uh, those jobs. Uh, for example, perform and monitor department operations and respond to problems on an as it needed basis, including complaints by the public, relate to town citizens in a professional, courteous and respectful manner, uh, and ensure how to handle a complaint, communicate with the select board and/or road commission. Basic things such as that. Perform administrative requirements, including but not limited the time sheet, work log, vehicle logs, et cetera. What the extent of each of those would be, I said, I suspect would be something to be determined by discussion amongst us, the road commissioner and the road foreman. Uh, so that there, it, the, the, the monitoring, the reporting, et cetera, doesn't become a major component of the time spent. But on the other hand, if we have an emergency, and I don't know what kind of documentation is provided or required by FEMA and/or the state or, uh, road watchouts, et cetera, if it involves logging hours, that logbook is available for use for that purpose. I know that, uh, uh, some, one other, uh, job description that, uh, Dot queued me into was very, very vague, didn't have any of this in it. And, uh, I felt that, you know, what would, what would I as a select board member wanna see in providing Mark with, uh, some guidance as to what the, the town's expectations and the select board and road commissioners' expectations of them were? And what we would be in doing our job in support of he and Archie to make sure that we come together in a manner that's most productive and helpful for the citizens of the town. Uh, that's essentially where this came from, uh, and the things that I left in. Trying to figure out what else here would be helpful for you to know again, feel free to, uh, go along as, and, and, uh, uh, read it as you feel and ask any questions when you have. Uh, he would be a, uh, a part of any, any new plans or cost estimates or specifications for highway projects. He kind of already does that, and I didn't think that was an expansion, but rather a part of what he already does. Uh, and, uh, let's see, uh, yeah, he has a great, it seems to me that he has a working knowledge of a federal, state, local statute or regulations regarding department operations and, and simply how when we go about doing the roadwork, it's done and in compliance with the, uh, the so-called orange book of the, the, the department transportation. Uh, uh, included, again, Mark may not always be the person that's doing our roads, you know, life has unexpected turns and twists, so, uh, I did not mean to offend Mark in any manner, shape or form, but I included and left in the maintaining a drug and alcohol-free workplace in compliance with Drug-Free Workplace Act of nineteen eighty-eight, uh, and the on-the-bus transportation employees testing act of nineteen ninety-one. Uh, and then giving flexibility to the board, uh, is, and, and Mark and his direct supervisor, which I guess would be the commissioner, perform any such other work as deemed necessary by the select board. Uh, maintain roads of Vermont agency of transportation standards. And the qualifications, there's nothing, uh, in that category that would, uh, prevent, uh, someone that's deemed by the town, and in this case, Mark has a lot of, and Mark is well-versed in all this, but it's pretty, simply putting, putting it in the writing. Uh, and then the term of employment, uh, is pretty, uh, indicates he's hired by the select board, terms of employment compensation and benefits are set by the select board. We kind of already had a discussion when Mark was recently retained by the town to outline what some of those benefits and expectations are on, on both our parts. And indicating that there's an evaluation process, uh, and that can be done at however you wish to set it, annually or, uh, as time permits essentially, or however you wish to do it. I mean, it, there's a lot of flexibility. On the other hand, having been a supervisor for, uh, sixteen, seventeen years in an industry where it was unfortunate to have the situation of someone being incapable of, of doing the job or not doing it in a manner that's appropriate, I felt that, uh, having formal training in the sense of what items should be included in a, uh, job description, how it, uh, places the relationship of the employer in a position of, uh, being able to uh, delineate shortcomings and/or significant errors that would bring about a termination. It provides a structure and a format to allow that to happen. Uh, not that anyone's gunning for anybody, but it, it prevents an arbitrariness to it or a person, issues of personality that may enter into something over time, depending that we're all maybe not here uh, in the future, uh, to interface and perform this role. So, uh, my sense is that uh, it, it, it's a good starting point for, uh, providing structure for all parties involved and, uh, a support structure from both sides of the issue in terms of the ability to communicate, the ability to explain. Uh, there, there are no specific timeframes, but suggested timeframes, annual review, it may or may not happen. I don't know if Mark even gets an annual review currently.
Well, something that we need to discuss at another time, and I guess in short-term and long-term employees should have some kinds of preview, if we.
They should.
Six months, and then a long-term employee's, oh, I had written it down before you even brought that up. Yes, I.
I like the fact that it takes a lot of vagueness out of the job description. Because in the state of Vermont, there have been some issues where vagueness was a, a poor choice of words and, um, I think, I think you're in the right direction, you know, I don't know without reading the whole thing, but, uh, the vagueness is definitely an important thing, because in the event it was something that the town had to address, if it isn't in writing or something like that, the town would not have anything to say.
I think as an extreme, if the town felt that, um, you know, it, it was not able to feel secure or or didn't know how to formulate an opinion about it, I don't know if the town has an, uh, an attorney employed who might have a specialty in personnel or human resources, but, you know, get their opinion on it possibly. I frankly don't think that's necessary.
Right, I don't.
Um, but.
BLCT could do it.
Exactly, exactly. That's, that's a good point. I guess that's not going in.
Alright.
So it's, it's for your description, uh, for your, for your reading, your benefit. I, I, I'm not saying it's the solution to everything, but I think it's a, it's a darn good start.
Um, I would like to, um, have the option of putting it on the next agenda for, for vote. I would like to pass a tie to BLCT. It's okay. I think it's well-written and I think it's very appropriate, but I just wanted to get a second opinion. David, what do you think?
Um, yeah, I think it's really great and thanks Stan for, um, going through this. I mean, I will say, reading through it, I have a lot of minor changes that I think we should make to it. Um, so I, I personally think we should figure out a structure for doing that before we send anything to VLCT.
You wanna work on it now?
But there, and there are a couple of things that I think we might need to discuss, but generally speaking, I think it's really good. Uh, and I think it, and to everyone else's point, I think it's a good idea to eliminate as much vagueness and lack of clarity as we can. So I think, I think it's, I think it's excellent.
Um, I'm not sure when you said that you have some suggestions as far as editing in, in.
Um, yeah, I mean, they're just, you know, I, I think throughout it, we should refer to the position as the road supervisor, not the road foreman, um, 'cause that's what our actual position has historically been unless we're gonna change the name of it. So there's a lot of references to foreman that I think should be replaced with supervisor. You know, select board should be one word throughout. There are some things, I mean, I could go through it if you want to go through line by line, or we can, I, I don't know how you wanna proceed.
Bring it up, maybe have, have him, can you, can you, uh, send an edited form to us or, or to Dot so she can send it?
Sure, yeah. What I'll do is I, you have, uh, Microsoft Word dot as well, do you?
Got that Microsoft Word, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I've turned on track changes to the version that Stan sent around and I've made my changes. So you'll be able to see what I changed and what I, I will say that there are a few things that, and we can discuss these, that there are a few things that I guess I do wonder, like where we say level of responsibility, the road supervisor one works under the broad supervision of the select board and reports directly to the road commissioner. I don't know that that's actually accurate or how we want this to be specified. I mean, I think it's more in consultation with the road commissioner or something possibly, but you know what I mean? There, there are a few things that I think we might wanna discuss how we tweak, but, um.
Sounds good.
That's, that's, that's very, I like.
But it's great, Stan. Thank you for doing this.
Oh, appreciate your, well, I think that's comments, it's things I, you know, I wasn't sure what the structure was, but here's a die to learn.
So I think that's the best step is to have him go through some of his, rather than try and discuss it all now, take forever.
Okay.
And then.
Alright, David, you'll do that and we bring this up in the next meeting and then finalize it then. Bruce, you wanna say something?
I like, well, I think it's a great, I, this is good from where I've read it before. And it's good that we're not voting on it. Of course, we can't because it was in center vote. But, uh, also encourage Mark to read through it and hear Mark's input too, so that, because he's the man that stood immediately that's gonna affect. So I'd like to hear what his opinion is, one more time.
Sure.
Yeah?
I, I apologize to Mark in getting it done later than I had hoped to. And, and so I, I do, I would very much, yeah, you're included as well. I think these structures, the suggestion made was far true.
Yes, at first glance, it does look very, very simple.
Alright, we're gonna, and, uh, move along then, um, and I'll put that on the next, uh, agenda item. Alright, discussion about re-changing the name of the Brookline Historical Society to the Round Schoolhouse Committee. Uh, we discussed this with the fact that the, uh, the naming of the committee as being Round Schoolhouse will, um, show that it is not encompassing the Brookline Meeting House, uh, or the Historic Baptist Church, whatever you wanted to address it as, so that it would be identified as such and, um, could have people who are interested be appointed to that committee. So I'm gonna make a motion that we change the name of the Brookline Historical Society to the Round Schoolhouse Committee. May I have a second?
You have it.
Seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? I wanted to put a blurb out with Julie's listserv about this to get, but Julie is having a problem with her listserv computer getting messages out. So, um, if that does not bother people, I will then go to work over unless you want to put this on another agenda, if you still wanted me to reach out to the committee. Just the changing of the name. I, I don't have a problem with getting the issue tonight and finalizing. Any other discussion then?
Yeah, and can I just ask, and you, you have, you've had, you had no negative feedback from anybody on each of, either of the committees to doing this, right? I mean.
No.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
I hope it's Cynthia. She says Cynthia now, um, would like to be, uh, on, as an, you know.
Yeah.
It's a.
Ex officio.
Ex officio for, for this committee, um, and she just, and has sat with me for the past two open houses there. She said, you know, they change names over time as long as what we do is the same, you know, it's the same building, so.
Sure.
Um, hearing that, let's continue on with the vote. All those in favor of changing the name of the Brookline Historical Society to the Round Schoolhouse Committee signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Hearing none, the motion has passed. We now have the Round Schoolhouse Committee. I will send that, uh, check with Julie again to see if she's, and I'll look for, um, more people to be interested in it. Thank you very much. We'll move on to the report of the town clerk at this time.
Um, the town has been extremely busy with a lot of conveyances and we've had a couple marriages and a couple of, uh, unfortunately, uh, some funerals, but, uh, we've been very busy and the real estate market seems to still be hot in Brookline. Um, but, uh, we've had a few people respond to the, uh, message that was sent out on the listserv in regards to their, uh, dogs not being licensed properly. Um, that's still working. And other than that, things are good. Our delinquent taxes are below two thousand dollars. Uh, we have three delinquents right now and I'm working with them and hopefully we'll come to some sort of agreement and get those cleared up as soon as possible. But we're pretty fortunate when I look around what's going on, so the people in Brookline again have, you know, know what their, their responsibility is and I thank them for making my job a little easier. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, select board report, uh, just a few things. I attended the rescue meeting in Rattleboro on September sixteenth. What came out of that meeting is that the, um, they are going to, uh, ask for a flat, the same amount for the town of Brookline as they have in the past and I took a picture of the bill, but I couldn't print it out. Um, they'll be sent, I think it's something like fifteen thousand dollars for, for rescuing for the town of Brookline. There's not, there's not gonna be a fee increase, although they are gonna look for a three-year contract. The first year no increase, there may be a slight increase on the second and third year of the contract, but it has not been sent to us as of yet. But that was what the meeting was about. Um, I also went, took, took the webinar on the fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth on virtual emergency preparedness. Uh, very interesting. I think one of the things we'll do in my remaining eighteen months or whatever is uh, probably have, not necessarily a drill, but a, uh, meeting of people who should be, uh, on board when we do have emergencies. We probably didn't call the, we probably, I probably could have handled these flooding emergencies better in calling the select board together and then reviewing over, um, contractors that we could have called in to, to help in, in the first few days. So those are things that I learned. Um, on September twenty-eighth, I attended a webinar, uh, with Wynden Investing in Vermont's Future, which was a Zoom. Um, it was interesting, it was about fifty-six of us online and we talked about things such as housing and childcare, uh, BARPA, uh, mental health, healthcare, uh, retention of qualified staffing, um, appropriate pay rates for people, income disparities, um, high income tax rate in town and so on and so forth. So again, it was something interesting for me to, to. So again, it was something interesting for me to, to, to hear since I've only been in Brookline now full-time, uh, less than 10 years. Um, on October 5th, uh, Brookline, uh, we had a mandatory FEMA applicant briefing at Townsend Town Hall. Bruce Mellon and I both went to that. Uh, it was a couple of hours long. Um, we do have to work on the declared September 29th emergency. Uh, FEMA emergency number 4621 will identify this incident as incident 4621 going forward. And uh, we will have some assistance from um FEMA uh in, in getting our paperwork together. And so I did mention earlier about having the temporary assistant, uh, administrative assistant to work on the paperwork and gathering it. And I think we could probably get our paperwork done, as I said, before Thanksgiving. Uh, we should be all, all finished. Um, let's see, October 2nd, okay, um. On Saturday, October 2nd, I met with resident uh David Shup. Uh, he owns what we call, he calls Camp Grammy on Ellinware Road, which is up on High West River Inn. And uh initially, he wanted to convey an easement to the town of Brookline. However, um, after talking with Guy Tans and I had Guy talk to Mr. Shup, we suggested and he agreed that he's going to contact his attorney. And as he develops the deed to pass that land uh to his children, he will have the restrictions about non-development of that area in his deed. So that is nothing that we need to do and I thought was the best way of handling it. Um, but I, I was able to reach out to our town planning committee and they were going to address it tomorrow night. But I told them there's no need to, David's gonna handle it. He was lawyer with the advice that Guy gave, since Guy knows how deeds can be very restrictive in how they're written. I know my deed, I have a silver bush in my backyard that the Bush family can access, but they moved a long time ago, but it's still in my deed. So um, you know, those are the restrictions that, that Mr. Shup can do for his property. Although it's a pretty cool camp up there. I love it. All right, um. October 4th, the open house at the, at the Brookline Meeting House and the Round Schoolhouse, while not as well-attended as the September meeting, uh, open house, the weather wasn't as good this weekend. It was still one in which a lot of people came. They did celebrate the uh National Historic Register, National Historic Registry for the uh Old Baptist Church. They rang the bell at noon and you could actually hear it up here at the Round Schoolhouse. It was cool to, to hear that and the Facebook page has an audio recording and a video of that happening as well. So um, that is the last open house that we're having for the historic buildings in town, but we are working on some fundraising ideas for going forward into November and then next year. Okay, um, also on October 4th, I met with Doug Johnstone of the Agricultural Management Specialist for the State of Vermont regarding a pesticide drift complaint uh from a resident. Uh, after I met with Mr. um Johnstone, I went over and we talked with the resident and then Mr. Johnstone um made some paperwork to help the resident fill out with this complaint. And then Mr. Johnstone went and spoke with the farmer uh who was doing the pesticides to check to see if, of the um, the way in which everything was being handled. I have offered to act as a middle person for a resident and farmer if they need to discuss anything. There was some discussion that the previous complaint in another year, that a tree line was supposed to be planted. To act as a buffer from, from pesticide spraying on the crops, that hasn't been done. So, you know, maybe that will, that will make things a little bit easier for the resident. All right, um.
Are there any ramifications adversely for the town government?
No, 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 I am, I'm wearing my town off, health officer hat. Um, I will file a town health office report and I also will keep a copy of the complaint from the resident. Um, and I think we're gonna work on that on Friday. He's asking to help put it together a little bit and, and. My handwriting isn't the best, but he says it's a bit of his. Uh, okay, um, on the 27th, I spoke with um Dustin Lee regarding the wifi hotspot for town hall. If you remember, uh, we did approve installing it here in town and they were going to come on a Tuesday to install it. But it was the Tuesday before the Wednesday that we actually voted to approve it. So we told them they couldn't install it. Uh, when I wrote to the uh Dustin Lee about the board approval, he said he, he hadn't, had forgotten. And so uh, they moved on to Maine and they are in other states, but he said, uh, when it, when they come back into this area, he will contact us about that. And I said, fine. All right, um, on November 16th, there's a meeting of what's now going to be called the Regional Emergency Management Committee, R E M C. R E M C, in 2021, the Vermont Legislature enacted a law requiring the creation of this committee to coordinate and support all region, regional hazard emergency planning and preparedness activities. Will move each region's ability to prepare for and respond and recover from disasters. I will be putting on the next agenda, um, an item. We need to have a second person, a second voting member for the town of Brookline due to them by October 27th. Our next meeting is October 20th. So I sent you all a copy of the, excuse me, the email that's dated September 29th. May I ask you to please read through it and um, I'll ask somebody to step up and, and be the second person.
It seems to indicate that the.
Second bottle of water.
Second, the person needs to be a member of the local emergency response group, like new required departments? Does that mean that we're limited?
We're all members of it. You, you, and you.
Oh, is that right?
And you, and you are all members of it. That's our LEOP.
Uh, okay.
We are all members on that party card. We put on that list.
Give it a gin.
This is a odd one. That's what I can swallow.
Gin is weird?
Yeah. Yes, so, so that's why, so read through this again and if you have a chance, also take a look at our, our emergency plan. You are listed, we are all on that list. So, well, again, October 27th, I have to send in the second name. I will be one of them.
So is that offset of the region of the planet we have already?
Yes, they, they, they had meant, they had modified it, um, and yes. And it's Wynden Regional is, is helping to coordinate Wynden Regional's coordinating this.
Right.
So as I say, you asked us to reply by email before October 27th with my municipality's second appointee's name and phone number. Um, second appointee can optionally designate the EMD to be their permanent proxy at meetings, but uh, they want a second. So, just letting you know about that. And, okay, we just saw, salt is next. I don't think we did one, right? No. So we got an email, it was from Todd Lawley or whatever, somebody, I got, I don't know. It was uh, somebody else's email, well, one of the emails I get from the E O T was that there may be a shortage of salt again. So if we haven't gotten anything, how did we go about the salt, uh, salted?
Normally they send us a letter.
Right? A couple of companies usually send us a letter. It was like.
Well, last year we used American for the first time versus Cargill. So maybe um, we got, we're not on the mailing list, because I haven't seen anything, nothing come across uh in the mailbox in the town.
There have been things, and you've probably seen this too, Dot. I mean, cause I get a bunch of road-related emails. Nobody's been getting, statewide, there seems to be a problem, and it may not just be in our state, that none of the salt suppliers seem to be reaching out to communities with offers of sa, of salt. And there's been, I've seen a few of people who claim they've, they've reached out to American and Cargill and have gotten no response from them. I think we should try to contact American. Um, Mark, I don't know if you have a contact there still. Or Guy, I think you might have called them. Somebody should try to call them to just see if that's even going to be an option to get salt from them.
Is there some sort of issue that we don't know about?
There seems to, well, the suspicion is that there's a shortage.
They're all on the ships that are becoming deported.
Oh.
All the stuff is on the, on the boats.
Life is on boats. Oh, shit.
Right, although people like, I mean, presumably people like, I mean, American mines their salt here. So that should, but, but there are transportation problems and all kinds of other problems that could factor into it, but. Um, so yeah, I mean, I guess we need to, hopefully, American has some answer, but if not, I don't.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that call tomorrow to uh check on American, see where we're at.
All right, then call me.
Okay.
You know, this weekend or sometime. So all right, so Mark, Mark's gonna be full butts to the ceiling. Thank you very much, but it was like, oh, yeah, we got.
How much salt do we have now on, on?
We've got like a 10-wheeler load.
Would that get us to November?
Yes, it should, unless we have.
Unless it's one big salt crystal.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it does uh, it's packed together by the boost and work upon move removal.
Moving it or grinding it up again. Let's do a zero again. All right, yeah, get on that. I don't want to be caught, caught shortchanged in, in that.
Just out of curiosity, did that come out of Bellows Falls?
No, that was uh Cargill.
All right, so that one comes out, you'll see.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, can, can you, on October 7th tomorrow, the planning committee is going to be meeting. Um, and anybody is welcome to go to that if there's somebody who wants to represent the select board. Um, I know Tom Cabot is looking to, to step back on some of his responsibilities and it's the first meeting for um, uh, Daniel, um, who was just appointed by us. I also made note to the planning committee that I noticed that the New Thing Planning Committee is reaching out to get information and suggestions from the communities for their ARPA uh, uses of some of the ARPA money. And I s, I was hoping that the, our planning committee will start to do the same. I just hadn't been able to read everything that New Thing was doing, um, but it seems like they, they've been pretty active. Uh, uh, their planning committee has been pretty active with ARPA, the Rescue Plan Act. So, just FYI, um, October 19th, there's a town, a using town ARPA funding in conjunction with the webinar. Is that the one that you said you were gonna, no, you were gonna do something tomorrow?
Well, I, I, I am gonna do the one on 19th.
The 19th, okay.
I, I believe I've already signed up for that.
Okay.
Uh, the one I'm doing tomorrow is the one you went to on Tuesday of this week.
Okay.
And my question would be, do you think it would even be necessarily helpful for a third party to participate in that scenario? Cause I, I feel I'd like to be supportive, but on the other hand, if you felt you got a good handle on it in terms of.
I, I could always use another, Stan, I think that, that if you, if you had the chance as a webinar to put it on or you're doing something else.
I'm going, it's one in person in Manchester.
Oh, it's one in person? Oh.
The rec center.
Great, great. Bruce, you were there.
I mean, honestly, I feel they're, they're pretty repetitive. I pretty much agree with that. Um, I thought that there are certain basic, basic tenants to the whole thing. And I just think that they kept repeating, going back and saying the same thing over and over.
Was it a PowerPoint presentation?
I'm just gonna say, uh, when they send me the PowerPoint copy, I'll send it to you and I will sit with you if you want. Go over any questions you have, I took some.
You can save it too while I'm driving.
Yeah, save yourself the driving if you wanted to, um, and I do, and, and once I get the PowerPoint, I'll share with everybody.
I hope that you would enjoy it, but like I said, there is a lot of meditation.
Appreciate that comment.
Yep, yep. All right, last but not least, um, again, there were, uh, there were two dogs that I turned into and then uh, Humane Society owns your claim for each dog and we're waiting on those people to register their dogs. So I'm making a follow-up on them because they weren't on our original list. But that's all I have. Okay, I know we're running late. All right, we've got two minutes.
Rot's a rock.
Five. We'll give you five.
Rot's a rock, yeah.
Okay, tops, all right. Building commission report, Bruce?
Oh.
Okay.
Is that it? I've done it?
No, I'm just going up.
You're being kind.
Before I start, I just want to say that we have a very good chance of actually concluding these buildings before the end of the year with a very minimal amount of effort. What I'm saying is, with respect to the school, which is basically done, except for I'm gonna ask Mark and I to do some maintenance. And I'm not going in below what low what we're gonna do, but I do want to say this, that there's been an issue with them running out of water uh, on and off for the last week, which I believe I've corrected. And I'll get into that in a second, how, why that is so important. And I switched the UV system yesterday.
Yes.
And it went out beautiful. And the other one is sitting there drained, waiting for the next six months. So we're sitting, and we have two, two sets of lights and no clear bulb, but no clear bulbs, which are $70 apiece, which we really don't have to worry about right now because I have a spare at this point. I have a full spare plus the two bulbs, the, the um, the light, the bulbs that, that, that actually do the UV sitting in a box in, in the building. Okay, saying that, um, my understanding of, of, of that, uh, about the water. So the water was having issues and I, I knew what it was. This is where we get into um, a little bit of an example here. Show me a belt on. Why am I going to say this? Because I feel that all the problems that we have had with plumbing, the toilets.
Camera's behind you.
The toilets, the zone valves that were replaced. And any of the fouling that we've had happen in the last several years was due to the hard water.
The camera's behind you.
I, I did okay, bud?
Yeah, you're fine.
Don't hit me, don't hit me.
All right, just do what you have to do.
Okay, so what I did was, we initially already know that we can change to the worst, put the water softener system in at the end of March. At that, before that point in time, just to refresh your memory, we put an initial filter that I bought, that you saw when I brought you in here.
Yep.
Which is a very expensive $8 to $5 water filter. That's supposed to be good for 20,000 gallons. That was under advisement by the company that makes the UV system, so we had a longer. Then I thought, maybe it'd be a good idea to have a backup filter. So I did that. I researched that and that's this guy right here. Well, the first one is still in place because it's supposedly 20,000 gallons. And when Tina had the, I have reports going back when, that Tina was going through about 1,000 gallons a month. It doesn't take long, it's, I was thinking you should get 20, 20 months out of it. So I put this supposedly better than five-micron filter that we were using before in there. Okay. Forget that for a second. The first filter had a second filter that line well gave. That wasn't a five-micron filter. It was called a 25 by 1 filter. So it filters better than the five-micron. They advised me to do that, even though I have the, the 20,000 gallon one in there. The 20, that, that, so I had both. Last week, start, everything started to change, but it's been six months. Why am I saying this? Because this is about what a filter would look after four to six months, uh, four to six weeks in a normal situation before we have the water system. So what did I do? I took the 25 by 1 one out, feeling it's done a shot, six months. Put this guy in, it wasn't working. I tried, it kept running out of water. So then I put one of these in like this, clear, because we had two left, two old five-micron ones left. I put it in the other day, two days ago, and I monitor it daily to see if that's gonna stop the problem of water running out, because as soon as it water, as soon as it run out of water, I go over, put on the bypass and I, and, and they're fine for, until I straighten it out. This is more like a trial and error to find out where I'm at with this filtration. Going back to the original, this is all so important because if I get this correct, and I think I have it analyzed, we should going forward eliminate all our plumbing problems, I believe.
Hallelujah.
Okay, so that's it for that, um.
So the bottom one is, is it the size of the mic, contaminant flowing through that is A, plugging it and B, the smaller size is not allowing enough water through because of it being plugged by the small particles?
No, oh, no, I think because, I think because of age. Six months is a long time for that 25 by 1 to let. I'm ecstatic. That's a $35 filter. This is a $35 filter. This is a thirty-five dollar filter, and it was lasting a month to six weeks. So, um, Gary Line advises, Line Well, and I, and I did a lot of research and think about it, did the two filters before they came in with a water fil- filtration system. They used water softener system, I really didn't wanna spend the money. But it appears as though he was right, he was right from a number of different respects, you're getting rid of the hard water. You're eliminating the issue with the UV system, you're gonna live, hopefully, we've had two zone valves going the last three or four years. Hopefully, that was the cause, the hard water, and the other issue is the toilets we re- we replaced, so I'm hoping that this put an end to it. Okay, that's it for that, now, we'll go back to my notes, so much for fun.
Five minutes.
Okay.
No, you've been five minutes, so you're okay.
Okay, so we, we do that, so, just reiterate, Mark and I are gonna do some maintenance and do the things that we need to do. I've been, I've been having a really bad problem getting somebody to service the boilers. I've been on the phone with several companies, including Nido, and they, they want everything, including what you do for your sex life. In order to be able to get an approval to, to get, to, to, to get them to deliver gas, but if not. But not to be funny, which I am.
You're being.
They, a major company will not service those boilers unless you switch the gas. So today I was in a pretty storm conversation with Jason from Jamaica, Cota, Cota about the whole thing. And this was after I finally got a freaking answer out of Stephanie from them, I said, how does it happen? I didn't, I'm good, Stephanie, I'm tight, um, she was great, uh, she got me the consumption for the last whole month. Six thousand seven hundred seventy-eight point eight gallons for the last year.
The entire time, just to me?
Just, just for them. And they pay three twenty some, three twenty-five, based on that consumption. So, it didn't take rockets, I just figured out that I felt they were getting a really crap ass, a crappy deal from AmeriGas. It turns out that if I can get them to switch over to Cota and Cota, not only will we get somebody just to service the boilers. On an immediate or yearly basis, if we have a problem or not. But I could've saved, it looks like I might've saved the three thousand bucks. And that's just based on today's price, which is four choice, based on what she's paying now and what she's, what she's, uh, what she would get. And they said that if she had been with them in the spring, she could have one of those prepayable plants and saved, could have, that price could have been downed. I think he said a do- a dollar ninety-seven, it was either a dollar seventy-nine or a dollar ninety-seven a gallon. She would have saved a phenomenal amount, because based on the three twenty-five a gallon, she paid sixteen thousand dollars last year for propane. Okay, that's enough of that, um. The handicap we talked about, um, if you wanna do handicaps at the school, um, we have an agreement, I have an agreement with the, with the school. That just as you're facing the old building where the entrance way is, where the little part where they, where they did the gardening there. Just before you walk up front, right there, and they totally agree with that, um.
Can I tell them my recommendation for the handicap here? Can I suggest a recommendation for where to put the handicap slot here or down?
Go ahead, you wanna share that, yeah, go ahead.
All right.
But I get time a lot. Doing this for my insurance, yeah.
Because of the flouting, that the snow gets plowed off this way, it would be difficult to put a handicap parking space here, which would be right next to the ramp. However, Guy, you know where you normally park? Here, a hu- perpendicular to where he parks, out here. If we put the sign in the dirt that's right here, right, where this is where Guy parks, here's the, the uh, T, the uh, sign door that has the notices on it. If we put the handicap sign here and put the tape out here, nine times out of ten days, meetings, there are no handicap people trying to park in there. But we would be within the law to provide that, and there is a, it's a short move from this parking space to the ramp.
But can they, can they get around that to park that way?
Yeah, we just park, you would just, they would just, for as many cars as you know that come in that are handicapped, they certainly could come in and park right here.
So where, where do you want it? By the door?
Well, not by the door, we can, I can show you at the end of the meeting outside.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
All right, but it's not letting snow, but it's, I don't think back here is gonna work because of the snow plow and the sign, it's just not gonna.
Well, now that, but the snow comes off the roof.
Yes. So, all right, we'll, we'll take a look at that later on, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm.
That's alright, that, that's fine, that's, it kinda leads into what I'm gonna talk about anyway, which is the town office. And I did call Scott back, I haven't, I called his, his cell phone, and I called his office yesterday, and I haven't gotten a response. Figured I'd give him another day, I don't know, then it's eight all the time, but I won't get into that. Um, he owes us another visit, I'm gonna see if I can get him to come down and comply with that request, of that agreement, excuse me.
This is a beta. What's the name of the company?
This is uh, um, oh. Spell it as a slacker, nothing.
All right, Damon, when you were saying Scott, I didn't know that, and I'm not, what were you?
Oh, I, I apologize, I should, I should definitely clear, and I also would like him to take a look at the, uh, the, the remains. And underneath the steeple, to see what it would take to just clean that little section up after we, it's a different issue. After we seal the steeple, because Kerry's been getting movers and whatever, I don't wanna get all that.
Yeah, no, you're, you're, you're out of.
This is part of the building, boom, it's part of the buildings, anyway, the town office, so, if he doesn't come, come back. I would suggest you and I finish sealing with, if you don't have a problem with that. Um, that's only, and I was gonna ask, and I hope everybody's working with this, ask Mark and I have already talked about, considering. Painting the fabrel that's worn off, I had the same identical brown fabrel on my roof in nineteen eighty-seven and I repainted with. Direct mental Benjamin Moore paint, uh, two years ago, and it came out carbonated, and it, and it would dress up the building.
You mean on this building?
I'm talking about that building of your, of the town office, not the, not the new addition one.
Okay.
Which is worn off, and part of that is also, um, we have noticed that the flashing around the chimney. Uh, has had some corrosion because you have a case of horizontally opposing metals that causes that corrosion. Uh, I addressed that on my house, too, so we could do that, now as far as cost. Couple gallons of paint and, and works fine, I have all the equipment, I have all the, the extension cords, the roll, well, I don't know, rollers. I even devised a system where you cut the towage roller down to fit in between the, I don't do this. The, the roof and then you do the ridges and it comes out, it takes maybe an hour aside, it's very simple. Uh, so the cost wise, maybe a gallon, maybe two gallons of paint, that's it, and, and Mark's side, um.
He has a good idea.
And get Mark to hang the gutter, if you would, and I'm also gonna work out sealing that hole of bulkhead. And more paint, I don't know the name of it, and I have a good home, so mom and he painted the bulkhead in, in, in.
School.
So we put a couple coats of that on it, uh, one of the reasons why I asked him to, when he submitted the bill to us, who'd be paid for. To give me the exact stuff that he used on that building, he also gave us some, gave us some of the stains which is in, in the door. Okay, let me see. Okay, that's it for that, now, last but not least, show and tell continues.
All right.
This, uh, refresh your memory, is what our round schoolhouse looks like on the inside.
Oh, okay, it's, it's a bowl and a.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I, can you see that? Peter, you probably already know what it looks like, not Peter, David.
Yeah, I love to camera.
Watch their water.
It's, it's where the chimney pipe would have gone through the wall.
Okay, yep, yep, I can see it.
You can see the laugh.
Well, at least they need me. No, not me, and I was thinking, what, what can we do about it? And you can't get that, you can't get that wall, so what are we gonna do about it? So, I came up with an idea, I know, I don't know if it's something that's amenable to everybody else. We put some kind of, some kind of nice painting or something over it, just to cover it, unless somebody has, has a better idea. So, when I, when, just put a painting over it, so when I went to the cape. Get this in my head, cuz I was complying on all this list in my, uh, the cape. Um, there's a lady on the cape, her name is Michelle Wong, she's been there for years, and she makes these prints. I'm not suggesting this, Fred.
I, I'm gonna suggest something right now.
Who, let me finish.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is not what I'm saying we should do, not this day.
Hand stuff.
Mr. Man, what I'm suggesting is an idea, she has dozens of them, excuse me. Oh damn it, I'm sorry, I forgot, minimize it. I was suggesting more of something like this.
Naked picture.
Yeah, we don't wanna do sand dunes, right?
No, it's gone.
Oh damn it, I'm sorry.
While you're showing that, I am gonna say, they have numbered prints of the round schoolhouse that can be framed and hung up.
Okay, I'll, I'll just go.
That's what I think, I think it should be something that does something with the building itself.
Okay, I just, I just figured that this idea's.
But that's a great idea.
It's cropped up in my head.
So cover it up that way, it makes you feel better, cuz we're not doing plastering, we're not going to change the construction of the stored building. But to, they're all, like I said, with Cynthia came to the open house, there is a box full of framed documents. You saw one with your, your signature, it was a Mickey Mouse, uh, comic that.
Yep, a name, yep.
So that to me would be more appropriate is, is putting something up that's actually from the round schoolhouse.
Okay, so I just wanna get rid of that, but I know, hide the whole trick, I think is a great idea, was that? Hide the whole trick, I think is a great idea. What do you, what do you have there? You can't, you can't, you can't get the wallpaper. Yeah, what are you gonna do? Put a white patch in?
Yeah.
Yeah, not, not that good? Anyway.
No, that's a great.
Anyway, we're getting there, now, the rest of the ones. Now, as you know, I'm almost done.
You passed seventeen, yeah.
I was cut off. The list that, that, uh, that Stan King of was excellent, and I thought that we should consider having a work fee. And it's not a big deal, maybe the twenty-third with the rain date of the thirtieth, or thirtieth and the sixth, to do the following. And it's basically following your list, like stuff that hasn't been done, and I'll go through it really quick. Painting the metal hoop of the rustle to neutralize it, moving and leveling stone steps to the toilet. Replacing women's and men's toilet doors, that's a problem, I got my finger there. Replacing missing front toilet wall board, replacing missing ceiling board in men's toilet. We fix the boards in the north gable end, remove all staples in front of the shed siding, remove stain and stones in, in both toilets. Replace trim wood and glass windows, that's a little bit of, it's a little bit of work. Interior wall hole where stove height was, we, uh, the, hmm, yes, replace brick above the entry door. And replace all three dozen boards of the front toilet exterior door, and I went up. And redo the front of the round schoolhouse vegetation in the spring, and I've already talked to Aaron Zarago. Something I could do with my tiller, which I rebuilt, but I could do that, rather like to see somebody else contribute their time and put their own personal in, in, input into it.
I think if you're gonna have a work fee, you would advertise it and get other people who might be interested in coming and helping too.
Okay, right.
Cause maybe more involvement, support for the brand work.
Okay, but this is, there, there isn't that much to do, it may seem like it's, the only issues are, are, are the doors, is making the doors. Making the frames for the windows, which I can do, and Mark has offered a bunch of barboard, you think you have a bunch of barboard?
I have a bunch, a bunch home to my house, and I can get more, but I have plenty of wood for everything.
And I'll confess, I'm not the greatest carpenter in the world, so if anyone wants to look at those doors and figure out a way how to fix those things, have at it. But everything else, we could clean the place up a little bit more, this steel that's still sitting behind the building. I think it was maybe next to the, um, next to the toilets, uh, maybe weed whack around it and do these few things, and I don't. Profess to see this would take a long, a night of time at all, and any wood that I could donate, which you all may not be familiar with. Mister Bills over there took some of my lumber years ago, some of my logs, and took it to his mill and brought it back and, and, and I had it. Cut up oak and maple and took to a, took to a kiln in Westmoreland, and they've been stuck up ever since behind my, behind my shed, and I have a ton of it. So any wood that we would need for framing a window, we have two, um, I would be happy to cut that out, I have a planer. We can come, cut it out to fit, and I would, I would recommend that we don't use regular windows, instead we use fixed glass. There's no reason to have a regular window, pay a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars a pop, with fixed glass would cost a lot, a lot less. So, depending if you all into that, I think that we can have the town office done, the round schoolhouse pretty much done. And the, uh, and the school done, uh, which is done, I think a couple little things, not, nothing like what we faced. And then next year, we turn our attention to the day of the day. The church.
Okay, all right, well, I, I, I think even the work, work fee, or, you know, getting some people together, but I would like to see, get community, other people involved in it as well. And, and hopefully the list will be up and if we can give any help on the.
Okay, so if you all wanna, we can wait until the twentieth, the Saturday, or if you're, if you're interested, or interested in doing this. I can provide my truck, I can provide sawhorses, I can provide circular saws, measuring devices, there's a bunch of stuff I have.
All right, well, I think we need to just lay it out and, and, you know, spray some a little bit so that we can, that would be great.
The doors and the windows are gonna be something, but not, not that big's gonna happen. Unless you get a specific people dedicated with experience to do that.
I'm not good at, I'm there with a race.
The other things that can be done in a quick one day or an hour.
Right, that's I.
It would seem a lot more practical and, and, uh.
But there are residents in town who have said that they would, you know, they have.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, and we got boards sticking off the gable end that you and I saw.
Right.
I know this, boards are sticking right into the mush, musher, into the weeds in the back. Why don't we try and, uh, I seen pictures of the round schoolhouse, that everything's cleared away around it, well, you.
And then rats.
Well, that's years ago, yeah, that's horses, so, you know, rot doesn't go away, it goes to powder.
Guys, what was I saying?
Just a quick question, uh, I'm, I'm just totally on the loop, is the, is the, uh, meeting house, do you have heat? Do you, are, are they having meetings now and it's heated and everything?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I wasn't.
Not, it was not in the sanctuary.
Not sanctuary.
Do they?
The, the.
No, but in the, okay.
Even for the Valvoline, I don't know what it's called.
Alright, so, but it's comfortable, everything's?
Yeah, it was there last night.
Great, oh, that's great, cuz I know there was some delay with the furnace and the stove or whatever.
Oh, that's all in.
Okay, so that's it for me.
It's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
I consider, I consider a freaking compliment.
All right, highways and roads.
Lot in here.
Time limit. I'm gonna tell you the same thing I told them, time limit. Okay, alright, so last Friday, the rental machine went back to its, uh, where it came from. And I spent this past week up till now, uh. Um, trying to catch up with stuff that I put off while working in Brooklyn for the entire month of rental. Uh, so I do have a list of stuff that needs to get done in town, that I will be working on from here on. A couple very important things, uh, to talk about tonight, and that would be. Uh, the, the culvert that we purchased, um, the select board okay, that we replaced the culvert. For the grant work in the flood damaged area, the culvert never showed up till the day before the machine went back. And I didn't find the culvert in the yard until I got back Thursday night, knowing that the machine was going away Friday morning. So, uh, I talked to Jeff Nugent about that grant up there, and that's the final step, if we install it, the grant will pay for it. So, uh, I'm try, I guess trying to get the, the select board's permission to, uh, pursue putting that culvert in.
Would you, you have, how would you get it put in?
I'm gonna have to probably rent a machine for one day to install that. To install that.
And that would be covered by the grant?
It would be covered, covered by the grant, the installation, the culvert, uh gravel.
Everything, okay.
So everything should be covered.
And remind me, this is the culvert where?
It was a three foot diameter culvert that we had a special meeting to vote to purchase. And it was an eight to ten week wait for this uh two culverts. Um and it's going just off the pavement on Putney Mountain Road going up there. So it's where the most damage to Putney Mountain Road took place. And right now, the, the old culvert that's in there is uh mostly plugged and the water is coming out in areas it shouldn't. So eventually there'll be a sinkhole if we don't fix it. So just.
I I think if that's a appropriate project, I don't see, you don't need to have us going on it, but I think I uh we want a consensus, when, yes, A and A, do it, do it?
Yeah, no, but.
Do it. Bruce says yes, I say yes, David?
Yep.
Yep, okay, go for it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Sure, sure.
Will the road be closed while it's being installed? I can put a notice out if that's a case.
Uh that would be great if we could, I would go to the other side and leave the poster over there stating if if I prepped everything and and had the road closed from like ten to two, that would, then then they can pass through as I do the VTL.
Do we have to notify the police department, fire department?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we would notify the state street police.
And I I also have the steel plates the town purchased, I'll have those on site. And I can put those over a hole if there's an emergency, I can slow traffic in ten minutes.
Okay.
It's just easier to not have, not put it in if, if, you know.
Well, just let me know if you, if you know what you're doing on a Wednesday, let me know Monday and I'll make the call to
Okay.
authorities, New Brook and the police about the road closure.
Sure. All right.
And I'll put it on Facebook and from porch and wherever else we move that information.
Okay, that'd be great. Uh the other priority issue I have is um now hearing, I I didn't go to the meeting, I I didn't know um the meeting for FEMA. We have to report all of our damages by October.
Uh no, we have to sign up as a, we need to get an applicant number by the twenty ninth. And that means two people, no, we don't need to have that data.
Okay.
I think once we are in, once we are starting to work on it, I think by Thanksgiving, we'll have everything pretty much itemized.
Okay.
We could take six, up to six months, we have.
All right, okay.
But the sooner we get it done, faster we can get our money. But for the amount of damage that we have, it's less than a hundred thirty thousand dollars or that they, that's called a small project.
Right.
And we have six months to do that for the degree in in road damage.
Sure. So the reason my asking was um, I'm not completely done with the finished repairs.
Right.
Uh we roughed the road in, it's been passable. However, to maintain it in the future, it doesn't have the surface gravel on the upper part of the mountain that was damaged.
I will say though, if we are using any stockpiled material that we bought last year, we still need to account for how many yards did we use and then establish a value for that.
Okay.
Cause it's nothing we're buying new, but we're still using it for.
Uh I would like to plan to set with treasurer and you or whoever uh to go through my paperwork, I've asked for copies to be saved so that we can go through item per line.
Fabulous, but.
And I can pinpoint where, I got pictures.
Yes.
To uh to bring out and um so uh one important measure is the, the torn up pavement from the flood damage on Putney Mountain. Um there's uh quite a few feet of totally missing pavement. Then there's half a road of pavement for a length, and then there's little juts cutting in where it kind of diminished. So the road will have to get cut and then prepped and paved. And I talked to Mark Pickering about this and he recommended that we put that out for bid like soon, this, this fall. And award it and have it worded that it can be done now if they're available or in the spring. Because come springtime, when you go and put it out, they all have already been working on their inventory of of uh jobs. And so if we get ours out there ahead of schedule, we'll be sure and have it.
If you can get to, if, before the next meeting, if you can get to me or meet with me and we'll talk about your parameters for what the bid would say.
Okay, I'll get some measurements, with.
Okay. And then we can write the bid up and we can vote on it at the next meeting to put it in the newspaper.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
All right, and uh, you know, if it's not gonna take place uh immediately, I can uh prep it a little more for winter, for snowplowing. Uh there's some rough edges that I can uh work on. Yeah. Uh another issue I wanted to talk about tonight is the hill road. I I started the the job of um the drainage issue on Hill Road near uh the power line. The trees were caught this, this summer, late summer and then uh I worked on, with the rented machine, I worked on cleaning the ditch to find out how much ledge was along the corner. I was able to peel up some ledge with the excavator and uh made some major improvements, however, there's chunks of ledge that I couldn't even scratch, so um in order to, to get the the right amount of drainage around the corner, starting at uh Joe Aidenberg's driveway, uh we would need to hire a hydraulic hammer to uh break the ledge up and uh so I'm, I'm asking the board, not, knowing that we're in wonder where we're at with the budget, I didn't know if the board would like to pursue this for, for this year or hold off till the spring, ne- next summer to see where we're at with the budget. There's a couple things.
Oh, I've looked at a lot, there's two for ledge issues, there's, there's two pieces.
There's, there's like three big pieces actually, yeah, that come right to the edge of the pavement.
Okay. Okay.
There's some that's uh a fourth that's it's right at the dirt surface, if you're walking, you can actually see. So there's more.
I see that, that's what I see.
Yeah, my, my, maybe five big places that need to be busted out.
This is something you would do, or you?
Oh, no, no, this would, this would get done uh because we don't have the equipment right now.
Do you have any idea of the cost?
Well, I got an estimate, but you know, not knowing if you wanna pursue it and if you wanna pursue it, you wanna put it up to bid.
So.
Thank you.
I've got a ballpark figure, but I don't wanna give away that figure.
Oh, great.
Use your hands. Turn the camera away, use your hands. Okay.
Um, well.
Now that the trees are gone, it's gonna allow the sunlight to come in.
Dry thing down.
Before the, it would ice up and sweep into the road and it just kept building. Now, the the salt that does get on it in the daylight will help immensely. But at some point, to get that ledge that comes right to the pavement is uh pretty important.
Mark, uh without saying how much you think the estimate would be, um if, I think we should, probably would, probably have to put it out to bid with our purchase policy. And we could determine after the bids come in, whether or not we will, we will have the knowledge from Samar, whether or not we could afford it.
Sure.
Or postpone it. And then we'll, I think we'll have to spend the newspaper ad money for whether or not we're going to do it anyway. So if, if besides the um looking at the stuff for the same salt and looking at the, the cost for the, the pavement, um if you could, we could come up with, I mean, you can, I can write a down for you and you'll talk to me. And we can come up with an ad for a, a proposal for that. And if we can get those all approved at the next select board meeting, would it be too late to do it?
No, I I, it's hard to tell when our winter weather is gonna set in, but if we continue to have a, a mild fall, uh it can be done right up until snow covered.
Okay, and uh we had um talked about this before, but if we can't afford this time to do it, we could mulch the area to prevent further erosion and then peel that mulch off and pick it up in the spring.
Correct.
Okay, so that's what, is. David, yes sir.
Yeah, I guess what I would say, my opinion is I'm gonna read into most of what Mark has said, that we could afford, that we could wait to do this. And at this point, my opinion is any road work that we can wait to do, we should wait to do. Because just from a cash flow standpoint, if nothing else, we are spending a lot of money that we're not going to get seventy-five percent of that back potentially for a while. So I think unless we, unless we have to do it now, or we feel it's extremely important that we do it now, I think we should wait and do it in the spring.
That was one of the things, go ahead, Bruce.
Uh is that a one day project, you think?
Yes.
Okay. And to say something about you were referring to, to the FEMA, the money coming back, uh Dave, uh one thing you probably don't know, the twenty-five percent, seventeen percent of the twenty-five percent could be, would be refunded to us as well for the state other than FEMA, that you don't know about. But no, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you.
It's agree.
I'm agreeing with you. We should watch our money, I'm just, I just wanted to inform you, if you didn't know, that we're getting more than the, we're gonna get, we should be getting more than seventy-five percent. As.
That's good, that's good.
So, uh I guess, I'm not into spending any money until I see what the financials look like, that's why. Like that would be hypocritical, given what we just voted on before. Um that's why I'm with the, with the electrical thing. Um I think we should see what, what it looks like and what, what last year looked like before we move forward with any major expenses.
Okay, Stan?
Uh this issue, I, I would agree with David. I, most of what you've indicated as well, it's probably, I mean, obviously that corner is a bad corner. I've almost lost it several times in the years I've been here. At the right weather condition without water, but the cost of it, it's serious difference.
Yeah.
I, it's definitely something that needs to be taken care of, but the line of sight is an important issue. But I would agree with David's sense of, and probably most of us, if we could defer that till next year, it is an important project, but do it, do it when we have a better handle on the budget.
Right.
Or at least more control of the budget.
And and there are also, like Doc said earlier, I believe there might be some mitigation project money to uh try and eliminate issues like that.
Right, we might actually be able to do, add some arc with in there and make a second culvert.
Yeah.
You know, at another point, but uh it would be a good idea if we can still put together, what is it, what would an RFP look like for that? So I guess the consensus is to wait on this project, Mark, and that we need to button it up for winter with mulching at this time.
Yeah. Okay.
But still, we could get some, some statistics that we could uh plan for.
Okay.
But I, I, we don't, our cash flow is a little tight right now.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, if that, if the flood hadn't have took place, things would be fairly normal, but I realize that's really throwing a wrench in the budget.
Right.
That's true.
Right. And and I don't mind if at some point I can actually put out on the list serve what's happening and somebody wants to know, I know some of the residents were concerned about what was happening and who was unsightly and how much work is gonna, what's gonna look like and that, that's what's happening. So I can help to, to touch base with those couple of neighbors. Stan?
With, without providing a specific number, would you feel comfortable with what feedback you got indicating whether it's a uh a four digit expense, a five digit expense?
Yeah, it's, it's a, a four digit, it would be under.
Okay. Under ten thousand.
Yeah, under.
Just to give us a feel.
All right, just on the diversion policy, national, compared.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Brad, you can say.
Just a quick question, that money on Putney Mountain Road, is storm related?
The, the big culverts?
No, no, the, the blacktop, is that storm, okay, cause we need uh, so we get
Yes. Storm related.
Quick, so we get uh our money back for it, okay.
Doc?
To what I understand, I understand that we will probably get our money from FEMA in a pretty decent time.
They said they're gonna be able to do it quicker because they're doing it remotely and they're not having to send out people, they're gonna rely on photographs.
Yeah, that's true.
So.
Yeah, so we should be getting our money by the end of the year, right?
May I say? By the end of the year, may I?
Hopefully. That's a lot of money, that would be.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, okay, so I, I mentioned that I, I wanna set with the stranger and whoever just helped sort out the flood damage with the pictures and uh pointing out where, um yes, and you know. I also, I don't know how many others got the same email, but Megan Grump from VTRN had put a email on stating that most every year normally, we have our center lines painted on our class two road. And this year, there's a shortage on paint supplies and, and we may not see any painting refreshed down our roads. Uh unless we have sections that are freshly paved with no lines, that might take priority to what does get done, but I think we may not see any fresh paint on our class two immediately. Um.
Jeez.
Yeah.
So what do you want to question?
Scary.
There is, uh, I'm not. Yeah, so basically, uh, the other, what's left for uh flood damage repair is just putting finished gravel on the upper part of Putney Mountain where it was uh filled in with uh heavy rock and stable lines, so. Uh I wasn't sure if we should, because of the budget being where it is, it's very passable, usually close the road. Uh no maintenance after October. So should we hold off on replenishing that gravel? Or will we lose our window of opportunity containment if I don't put it up there?
Oh, oh.
Yeah, that's.
You know, how long is our window of opportunity gonna be for
Six months.
big damage, hills, repairs, uh.
Six months, uh.
Six months from.
From, could you get the material and, and, and put it in the, in the yard?
No, it has to be a flood, it has to be a flood.
I think I. Um.
I, I think storm related damage needs to be finished.
Yeah, it has to.
I mean, that's considered a void uh sideline, I think with storm related damage is, is something that we would like to
It's the only way we're gonna get paid for it.
Okay. It's important.
They would, would do it.
All right, that, I believe that's gonna be, you know, other than the culvert, I think in the paving, we pretty much have.
All right, was there any storm damage on Whitney Hall?
Uh there was, and I, where I widened the road, took care of that damage. I've got some pictures, Mark Pickering from VTRN said anything that's eroded more than ten inches is considered flood damage. So I've got pictures. In that same area, for as long as I've been working through the town, is eroded storm after storm when you get the hard rain. So now, I believe I've stopped the, the erosion typically. It's helped all the way around for drainage or uh plowing. Free, it's uh traffic, we now can pass without having to follow in the ditch, so. Um. And I, I, I just, well, well I got the floor here, I just wanted to thank Samora for all her years of help. And uh I also just wanted to say that the two hills are the priority, they take priority for road maintenance. Um because water picks up speed and creates more erosion on a incline, the flats tend to take the, the water easier. They will flood, but then they dissipate within, without any damage, so the hills, I generally check the hills first, uh. And. Basically. Uh, as far as getting the piers done up. Uh, just because we don't have proper equipment to do more than just scrape them. Is why sometimes the roads tend to lack repair, so I just wanted to add that. Lack of material and equipment, but I can scrape the roads, you know, day after day, but there's things like the drainage that. Needed the rental equipment and, and material, the other thing. You know, for the most part, Whitney Hill is maintenance-free, other than a few ripples from cars tearing up the. Road and creating these washboards. A lot of times throughout the whole summer, there may be one pothole, starting at the top. Uh, maybe a few dead tree issues coming down. The only main issue for, for Whitney Hill was the eroded ditch on the very narrow section, which is. Taken care of, the other thing is mud season. And Whitney Hill, because the sun beams in. At the right angle, softens this one section and creates mud season. Uh, a few times of the year, winter, spring. So we've started applying that, that fresh stone over it and it's creating a, a map. That's gonna help year after year, we'll probably have to continue to, to add that, but um, for the most part.
Until we pave it.
Until we get done shaving, yes, yes, so, um. So this is the other thing I, I mentioned to Doc one time there uh, recent, was. Having some material in stock at the town yard. Uh, that wasn't froze together, because a lot of times come mud season. Even if you have the stone pile, it's frozen together and you can't even scrape it apart. And I was thinking if we had a, a little building with a roof covered like the salt bay. You could put this crushed stone in there in the summertime. And let it set in there out of the weather and it would stay loose, when spring got here and you needed. Some repairs on your roads, you could scoop that up, take it out, cover that mud and uh.
Because right now that stone is out exposed, if you pull it rolling to the lot, it's a pile.
And, and after winter is uh, covered it and, and it. It's ours and melts and freezes and goes right down into it. So that's just, you know, digging down the road in the future, some powder to.
Right.
How we can repair roads easier and on time.
I think David's gonna tell us that he's gonna have our salt shed filled by Christmas.
Oh, I, I have a big red phone around here. Yeah, so anyway, that's the end of the night.
All right, well, thank you, Mark, I know you work very hard, uh, and uh, I, I think you, when you're dealing with the residents and that, that, that they appreciate your honesty and, and um. Um.
I, I try to treat everybody the same, everybody fair, I try not favor any roads, I.
Like everybody. Yeah.
I, I don't worry.
I do have to say that we were a little surprised when uh, Alta Equipment sent us another bill for another month. For the uh, excavator, and I know it went back because I checked, but uh, I did call them and say, uh, we don't have it, so we're not paying it.
I spoke directly to the rental person and said we were all set for one month and uh.
Yeah, I know.
Maybe they were just.
Stuff happens.
Can we, can, okay, I'm gonna ask that we uh, table the loan discussion for the equipment purchase this evening, um, because of the time.
Doc, can I just ask, I have a question for Mark.
Yes, sir.
Mark, the, the um, the Parker Road grant work.
Yes.
Um, so we need to, that's all complete now, right?
With the exception of the seed and grass, uh, the speed and the hay, which will, will take place right away.
Okay, yeah, cause we have to have all that work done before October thirty-first. And we have to have all the invoices for all of that. Um. Clearly say before October thirty-first, so that we can put that together, so I know at one point, I remember. I think you said Archie said he was gonna. Do something related to that grant, or do I still need to put together the? Grant?
I think what I, what I did, I, I asked Archie if he'd be willing to take over uh, the grant.
Request.
Uh, applications and stuff, but I think I had told him that you were gonna take care of the Parker Road one, if that's okay.
Sure, that's, that's fine, so maybe, um, we don't have to figure it out right now, but maybe at our next meeting. You and I should figure out a time that we can meet and. Cause we'll need to pull together all of the invoices related to it and, and complete all of the paperwork to. Submit to the state to get the reimbursement for that, so.
Okay.
Let's think about maybe figuring that out at the next meeting, we can figure out a time to do that.
Sure, now, uh, everything was done that was asked for uh, on paper. With the exception of the seed and, and the hay. And I, Archie plans to uh, as a, as a renter, a hay shooter that'll. Blow the hay and seed on all projects that I've done in town, it's in one day. So that'll be the final step, which would be.
Okay.
Uh, if not this week, beginning of next week.
Okay, cool, that's great.
I think the last thing was the picture.
Yeah, right. So maybe we can do that at the same time, once you're done with that, we can make a plan to go through and find all the invoices. And we can take the pictures and everything and I can submit all that.
Okay, sounds good, I'll uh, I can let you know soon as I'm done with the hay and project.
Okay, yeah. Okay, that sounds good, thanks, Mark.
Yes.
All right, you're good, anything else, we can move along? All right, uh, communications, uh, emails?
So, Doc, sorry, Doc, we were gonna, we were, I was, I think there was discussion about the salt sand shed, so.
Yes, yes.
Um, just an FYI, we put in a. I submitted a grant application on Friday for the municipal mitigation grant to hopefully. Possibly get us a little over a hundred thousand dollars more. Um, to try to make up most of the. Additional estimated cost on the salt sand shed, what I will say is that if we get this money. So there's another grant, this transportation alternatives grant, which is. Due in November, we're also gonna apply for that grant, because we won't know. Whether we got some or all of the money from the first grant before the deadline. For the second grant, so unfortunately, we have to apply for both of them. And hope that somehow we get. A lot of money, but what I will say, and this is another reason that we. Should probably be careful. Relatively speaking about how much money we spend. Is that assuming we get enough money to be able to do this project next year. Under any circumstances, the amount of. Our match out of, out of pocket money from the town is definitely going to be more than what we anticipated. When you guys did the grant application five years ago. So it's definitely going to cost us more, hopefully, we can get enough grant money, additional grant money, that it doesn't cost us. Substantially more, but it's gonna be more than we expected, so we're gonna have to come up with more. Match out of our highway funds than we had anticipated before. So that's more money that's coming down the pipe that we're gonna have to spend.
Are the product, are the, are the project managers' fees gonna remain the same?
I expect they will. Um, and those. Not to get too far into it, but I finally, for the first time, I think since I'd ever, I finally saw all of the grant application stuff. And for whatever reason, we had a series, I won't get too, I don't, don't wanna digress too much, but we had a bunch of conversations a few years ago. About how we hadn't built in money for project management when we applied for these grants, and actually, we did. We did, we did put in money for project management, however, we didn't put in money for. Uh, design engineering, Ron Bell's money was never budgeted for in the grant application that was originally put in. So. Hopefully, we get enough additional grant money that it all washes out, but. Yeah. So that's.
Thank you, David, for, for working on this and continuing following through with the oversight, we very, very appreciate it. It's just something else I. You're the handle, thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart. All right, uh, communications email, um, I think we talked about the emails as far as the different open houses and some of the residents, uh, things and we. I'm gonna go through the regular mail right now very quickly, uh, we have a letter for Abadum exterminating, reminding us that there is. Time to treat our homes for mice. We have a letter from Vermont Family Network, uh, thanking us for the contribution of the appropriation of two hundred and fifty dollars. That is the Vermont Family Network. There is a letter from Vermont Center for Independent Living. It is a thank you for the appropriation of eighty dollars to them at the uh, our town meeting. We have a letter from. Another letter. Uh, saying that they're writing to asking us to give an appropriation of two hundred and fifty dollars for this upcoming year. We have a letter from the Southeastern Vermont Watershed Alliance, thanking us for. Um, asking for an appropriation of one hundred and ten dollars to help pay for monitoring of the rivers. So this is goes to the treasurer for appropriations.
The thing I'll note about all that stuff, Doc, is that. We should really be. The appropriations requests, you guys should be making a folder for us, because we're the ones. Who are gonna put together the whole budget. And probably more so than last year, so.
Okay.
For, so requests for appropriations, what, like we've always done, we would go through those. As a select board when we get to our budget discussion, so.
Okay.
You might wanna just make a folder yourself and know where that is.
Okay, uh, American Red Cross thanking us for two hundred and fifty dollars and. That's, and then there's a town, town meeting, close call, all right, uh, right now, we're gonna continue on to payroll warrant. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the payroll warrant number twenty-two-two-dash-thirteen. That is dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one. In the amount of one thousand eight hundred five dollars and ninety-three cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussions? I will note that I have signed this payroll warrant. Uh. Tuesday, I came in on Tuesday and, and signed it since it was, uh, people got it through direct deposit anyway.
No, actually Saturday.
Oh, I came in Saturday, okay, um, so, so that's my discussion, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty-two-two-dash-thirteen dated September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-one for one thousand eight hundred five dollars and ninety-three cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any opposed? Hearing that, motion passes. I'd like to um, make a motion that we approve Accounts Payable Warrant number twenty. Twenty-two-dash-fourteen dated. October sixth, two thousand twenty-one. In the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand. Two hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-five cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Stan, no doubt, discussion. I will make note that this um, includes the rental of the wheeled excavator. It includes more fu- flood damage materials and it also includes two hundred, almost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that goes to the West River Modified Union Education District. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrant twenty-two-two-dash-fourteen. Dated October sixth for two hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-five cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any, any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. All right, very quickly, I'm going to go through for the agenda, one will be two voting members to be appointed to the camp, town of Brookline, to the Regional Emergency Management Committee. Number two, Samara will be here to discuss the unordered ended, uh, end of year. Uh. We will also have a response from the auditors about an external audit and its needs, we will uh, finalize the job description for the road supervisor. We will have a bid for the salt for the winter written and ready for approval for publishing. And we would also would like to have the bid ready for approval, ready for publishing for the pavement on Putney Mountain Road, which was damaged, and the other items that come about, come up, I can add, okay?
Just to clarify though, Doc, we won't publish anything for the salt.
Oh.
We don't, we don't do an RFP for the salt, we get bids from, we get pricing from, hopefully, one or more vendors. And then we, we pick one, but we don't publish anything.
Okay, thank you for reminding, I was wondering why it was not putting, all right, anything else?
Um, we, well, we, we really need to decide when we're gonna start working on the budget.
Uh.
So you guys do year-end stuff.
Yeah, and we're dating the year and stuff on, in October twentieth, so we're gonna have to probably have like a budget beating in November, uh, just for fucking budget. I think, and so.
Is there anything else, huh?
You wanna make a take, you wanna? Uh.
So you, so, no, I'm just, I just wanna make sure we don't wait too long.
No, no, I mean, uh. There, yeah, I, I had asked for several times for the treasurer to report earlier and other attendants, and I didn't do it today, but like, so. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll do, we'll work on it in November, December, and hopefully we can get, get it done, okay? All right, um, hearing that, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the C D's meeting, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? None, all those in favor of adjourned the C D's meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any opposed? Hearing that, meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-three, thank you very much for this lengthy meeting, but we got a lot done.
Thank you.